Okay. Roll call. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman Jones.
I'm sorry, I'm here. Good evening, everyone.
Councilman Harry?
Here.
Councilor Hairston?
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Here.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Here.
And Councilwoman Curtis is here. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Come on.
First by Ms. Ferguson, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Jones. Discussion? Okay, I'll just say that I have added snow removal to the agenda earlier today. As part of this emergency work session. And that was it, so. With that, I'll have a vote on the agenda. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Curtis is a yes. Seven yeses, the agenda has passed. Okay. We'll start off with some administrative things. Council, yes, Council Clerk Louis added the minutes from October through December 2nd into our packet. As you know, she is out of the break, but she should be coming back. But these meetings are available for review and then we will be presenting them for to vote on next week after it's reviewed. So if you have any questions, you know, feel free to just email or, you know, what have you. Next up, I would like to officially welcome Ms. Consuela Barber as the City of Glen Arden's new city manager. She has an extensive history in municipal governments. And, you know, the entire council was impressed during their interview. And she also interviewed with the mayor. And she is now here, immediately on the front lines of a snowstorm. So Ms. Barbara, turn the floor over to you, tell us a little about yourself and say hello, if you'd like to.
Thank you so much, Councilman, Council President Curtis. I do appreciate the opportunity to serve the council and the residents of the City of Glen Arden. I'm looking forward to a prosperous new year and one in which we get things done. Today was an example of hopefully being able to get some things done. I know that this did not meet people's expectations. But going forward, we certainly look to learn from our mistakes and to have things go a little bit more smoothly. Just about me, I come to you from all over the eastern seaboard, having worked in Virginia, Maryland, and Georgia. And I enjoyed the weather here, although it does snow, I do like the snow. And I am looking forward to getting out and knowing a lot of the residents through all the activities that you all have planned. Now, we are in COVID, I will try to make my presence known as much as possible. And again, thank you all for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Again, welcome, we're so grateful to have you on board. Next on the agenda are the administrative reports. Because, what, Mayor, Mayor City Manager Report. Mayor Cross go first and then open up to questions. Councilmembers, you would have had this in your inbox, so I'll let Ms., oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Cross present, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask accordingly. Mayor Cross?
Thank you.
You have about 10 minutes for the mayor's report.
Very well, thank you, and Happy New Year to everyone. It's a pleasure to see you here on this beautiful snowy day. I will say that we did take all the necessary actions to move forward with removing the snow. And I thank all the citizens who did come out and shovel their snow in their sidewalks and try and get out front of what it seems to be about a foot or more, maybe even two. If I look at my drift on the back porch here, it's about almost three feet, it's insane. But we are happy to be here in this 2022, looking forward to doing greater things. Welcome to City Manager Barber. We've already started to work forward and moving this mission forward for the city. We've got some HR actions, you all have my report. We will close code enforcement for the second time, part-time. We will have a closing for January the 2nd, 7th, which is coming up really closely here. For the Gold Room crew member, we also have that one closing, January the 7th. We will add one for Gold Room, Gold Room Advisor. We are working towards bringing that resolution to the council in this interim until we do have the Gold Room Coordinator on staff and spun up and ready to serve. That Gold Room Coordinator will close on January the 10th. As we look at the resolutions over the past year, it sounds so nice to say 2021 is done. We do note that we have provided resolutions for the Director of Public Works. We did provide a resolution for the approval of snow and ice contract back in December the 14th. We are happy to see that is now as a topic of discussion. We have a resolution to approve the Treasurer and the Chief of Police. We're still holding on that from the council's perspective. The mayor's office has supported six external office calls with the Amateur Radio Club. We have now been appointed Mr. Walker, who is a certified ham radio operator. So in these times, if there were dire emergencies, i.e. all of our landlines went down, all of our electronic means of communication went down, then we would have access to the Amateur Radio Club and a dedicated resource to provide us emergency services. So this is in line with just-in-time service, and we are grateful to the American Legion, Mr. Greenhouse, and the team over there for what they're doing to help bring the city forward by way of disaster preparedness. I will acknowledge that we have done a very good job with the COVID testing, very encouraged by that. We also were able to administer just at about 50 new COVID, as well as influenza, tests to various residents across this city and beyond. So this is a good news story, as people are trying to do their part. I do want to bring to the council's attention as well Glen Arden Hills and a couple of calls that we've gotten on some suspect activities. I have coordinated this with Acting Chief Jackson, so that he is made aware of these activities, starting from November to December and present. We do need to follow up with the McLean Avenue cleanup. I will say that the proposal was provided to the Treasurer. The bid came in at an opportunity for us as the administration to get that done. And in the next two weeks, we would hope to be able to handle the McLean Avenue issue, particularly the portion of Glen Arden. We do have a concern over the voucher status for those that are in need of permanent housing. Being able to advocate with the Assistant Director, Department of Social Services, I've been doing this since September of 2021. We are trying very hard to ensure that particularly our residents that find themselves in the need of having vouchers will also not only be able to readily get in a facility, but also that that facility is safe. And that brings us tying into what's happening there at our Glen Arden Hills community. I will say that I am happy to see a topic of discussion being traffic safety. I've been in contact with Darryl Carrington. He is the Managing Director of Carrington and Associates LLC. He has offered us some extreme opportunities by way of traffic enforcement and reducing the speeds across Glen Arden. Now Lieutenant Robinson was on the phone call with me. The major concerns that we have as an administration, as the residents have been, for safety of our children. And this presentation was highly impressive. So council, I would love to have the opportunity to bring Darryl Carrington's team to you, so that you can likewise hear this presentation, no cost, to the City of Glen Arden. And they will provide the resources to actively get after those that do not pay their bills. So this is really good, and this is one of the things that we are having a problem with, not just in traffic management with people paying the bills, but also in code enforcement as well. So again, moving the mission forward, getting after those cases where we may not have been getting our payments that are due to the city, which incurs more speeds because nothing happens. So based on our October consensus, we were reaching out to GS Proctor and Associates and also per Councilwoman Jones' instruction, acquiring two other lobbyists to go along with that proposal. So we would love to be able to move forward with getting our lobbyists on station and ready to serve the City of Glen Arden soonest. Deepi has, in fact, approved 1082020, which is the demolition of Martin Luther King site. This work was completed December the 4th. It was a sober moment, even for myself and many other residents that had played there and had seen their earlier childhood life grow there. So I just wanted to acknowledge that part of history and just what it meant, not just to me and my little girls, but everyone there witnessing that on the street side facing the demolition site. But on the up note, we are looking at, as per Councilman Herring and many others' instruction, a temporary outfit which will be a non-permanent gazebo here in the near future, and then an adult fitness area there in the rear opposite the children's park. So good stuff in the midst of, it's like a phoenix, it'll be reborn. So we are looking at obtaining from Prince George's Health Department some training on Narcan. As we are tying back to our discussion earlier about the uptick of possession that's happening, Narcan is something that was taught and briefed in an extremely heated session at Mako, which is the Maryland Association of Counties. And many of the chiefs and department police officers have sworn by this. They use it extensively in environments where it's not even just an environment where there's poor or more likened to overdose. It's just in an environment that proves effective to save a life. And the one good thing about Narcan, and what I've heard and learned from this particular meeting at Mako, is it doesn't impact you, say, if you were having a seizure and you were administered, it's a nasal ingestion. But the Prince George's Health Department is able to do onsite training. This is something that I would love to have for our officers to have ready training on. And again, this is briefed by the Maryland Association of Counties as a must-do across the various counties in this time particularly. As we look at our website, our website was actually ready to launch December the 28th, but we held because we're waiting, wanting to make sure that everyone that wanted to have input into the website had an opportunity to do that. So now I've returned an email back, particularly to council and additional members of the administration for your feedback. Would love to have that so that we can press forward with launching our new website. The first ever Polar Express was December the 18th. We had a successful turnout. We donated and gave away things in excess of approximately $9,000. We had 260 persons there. Huge shout out to our Glen Arden team, to our community partners. We had the Maryland Park Police bring out one of their steeds, Mr. Cash. And we had Sutland Fire and Rescue. We also utilized this as an opportunity to thank our own Glen Arden Finest Police Department for the work that they are obviously doing for us as essential personnel. While we were all snowed in, they were out patrolling the streets, and we are grateful. We had several residents who actually donated material to ensure that we did have an abundance of things to give away. And it was just a fun time. We watched the actual Polar Express cinema production movie. I will say that we have to darken the room somehow, but that is a lesson learned for next time. But every child got a gift, and it was an opportunity for us to send the citizens the love of Glen Arden. We had our luminous partnership with the Glen Arden Housing Authority, and we did administer COVID-19 first, second, and booster, as well as flu shots, December the 16th. Again, just about 50 persons were vaccinated. And we can couple that with the testing that we've been doing here with Councilwoman Fareed. So we're, I'm very pleased with what the city is doing to do their part in this time. The City of Glen Arden's former Chief of Police, Philip O'Donnell, was laid to rest formerly at Arlington Cemetery on December the 23rd. His family sent their love and appreciation and kindness done by the city during our acknowledgement, our memorial service that we had. They continue to feel the love, so I just wanted to thank every citizen and everyone who have participated in showing the family that love of Glen Arden. We did additionally follow through with supporting the needs of over 500 families through our various mayoral end-of-year community outreach programs. The Harvest Day Rewind gave out turkeys there, Prince George's Association of Realtors in support. We did have an opportunity for Oh Gift Thanks food baskets distribution, where we met the needs of just over 300 shattered ceilings, as well as Fresh Fully Restoring Every Son's Hope supported that with Prince George's Stand and Deliver. And then on Giving Tuesday, we met the needs of just about 150 with more Fully Restoring Every Son's Hope donations. And during the Polar Express, residents again donated turkey. So throughout this season, we have done our part to ensure that we extended a hand wherever it was needed. And I'm so grateful for everyone who did stand up and show their support this year. I am very, very happy about the Santa with a Badge event, and I wanted to compliment Glen Arden's Police Department for launching this. It was a fantastic event. We were able to support, 13 officers participated in this event. 13 kids went shopping, we came back, we wrapped gifts with them. Councilwoman Jones was there, Councilwoman Ferguson was there. We had a fantastic time, and I just wanted to acknowledge that hope that was provided to the eyes of a child. And then for our flag status, many of you have possibly seen the flags going up and down, up and down. Well, the state of Maryland actually requires, as well as it can be an executive order from the President of the United States in the time of mourning across the state or across America. And in this time, we have been standing strong with the City of Baltimore, who did lose one of their officers in the line of duty. So the ceremony and the candlelight service happened this week, so we will be returning our flags to full staff. We are working with resolutions, preparing for beautification. We've talked about the landscaping a lot. I myself had a 20-foot tree fall during a snowstorm, so I can only imagine what it looks like across the city as we look at the amount of snow that was dumped across the city. So that's something, council, that we'll be bringing forward, is a landscaper contract to help with the amount of public works personnel that were out of office this season. We ended up with two personnel on staff. So I just wanted to make that acknowledgement that it is time that we do right-size that landscaping contract. So.
Thank you, Mayor Cross, are you, the report?
Well, I just wanted to acknowledge one other thing here is the Quarterly Events Postcard Program. So started a new 2022 Quarterly Events Postcard Program. You should get it, it covers January, February, and March for the first quarter. And it will highlight all of the key events and things that the citizens can get involved in across the city. And this is an opportunity for all of us to get on the same page as far as events. And so this will save us about $6,000 a year in mailing and postage and fees. And what it does is it brings the whole community together, and it maximizes awareness of happenings across the city. So where we have citizens not on high-speed internet or even broadband watching, that they are able to at least have something in their hands that gives them the knowledge of what's going on in the city. So aside from the website, aside from this postcard, and aside from our social media presence and word of mouth, as well as calling in to our front desk and speaking to our administration, we are now trying to evolve and put a full circle on our communication strategy. So we will be, at this point, getting ready to conduct our administrative employees' evaluations and feedbacks. So we are looking forward to that and foundationing our 2023 budget submissions, which is due May-June 2022. So we're looking forward to that with our new city manager and treasurer. So with that, thank you so much, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Are there any questions from the council as relates to Mayor Cross's mayor's report? No?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Mayor, I saw the postcard with your events on there, and I do have some concerns with that, because, one, I would like to know how all of those events are going to be funded. I was looking in the finance report under the administration, especially events line, and there is, I think it was budgeted at $6,000, and $4,000 has already been spent, so you got $2,000 left. Another thing is the Gold Room. The Gold Room is an enterprise zone, that's a business, that's where we use to generate revenue from. And a lot of those dates are during the spring and summertime, which is prime wedding dates. And that's prime business for the Gold Room, a lot of people book those dates. And you've got events scheduled in the Gold Room. My issue is that, that being a business, we should not be having, well, let me say, we can have events, but the events need to be approved by the council. And that's what's in the Gold Room rules, is that, you know, elected officials or who want to use the Gold Room can use it per approval from the council. Because the bottom line is, it's there to make money, not there to just hold events. And that's a lot of events, so my biggest concern is also, where is this money coming from for all of these events? I'm not, I'm not seeing, I mean, there's, I mean, I mean, I like to know that, I mean, I don't even feel comfortable supporting anything until I can find out, I mean, we're six months into the year, and so you're already down two-thirds of the budget for administration for special events. So I'm just trying to figure out where's the money going to come from for those events, and that's for the Gold Room, usage of the Gold Room, that has to go through the council for approval, because that's what we, that's what, the Gold Room was set up by the council as an enterprise zone. The council creates the rules and regulations for running the Gold Room, and the council also approves who runs the Gold Room, by way of who you, who's brought in as the Gold Room Coordinator. So I think those things need to be looked at and addressed before we move further with advertising any of these events, because if the money isn't there, I don't think we should be advertising these events. And also, you sell that Gold Room, we need to make sure that that Gold Room is available for paying customers only, I mean, every mayor has had to come to the council and ask, request use of the Gold Room for their special events. That's just the way it's been, because it is a business. So that's my first question.
Mayor Cross?
Great, thank you so much for that. And yes, we are happy to, again, work with the council on this. I do want to acknowledge that in the month of December, the Gold Room did hold eight events where it made $5100, $51, $5,150. The community center was booked at a total of six events where it made $300. The highest grossing event of December was the Gold Room. There were only two free gratis events in the Gold Room. So no events were circumvented as a result of the Polar Express or any events that we had in that Gold Room. So I will acknowledge that, that nothing was held up for the events of the city. And we did, this was one of our highest grossing, and we are doing a very good job as far as marketing. But what I will say is that most of the money that comes into the Gold Room, unfortunately, has been because of repasses. And so that's something that we do need to address, because repasses tend to happen during the business hours. And I have been getting a ton of complaints from those that are paying customers renting the Gold Room, because they feel like people are shunning them, and their music is too loud, and their children can't laugh and play when it should be a point of celebration versus a point of mourning. So we do need to really have a discussion about this Gold Room, maybe even, you know, the facility itself and how it's structured. So that's your first question, sir. We did gross highest in the Gold Room, and no events in the Gold Room will ever circumvent a paying customer. Now, as it pertains to the budget, now, I will say that Giving Tuesday didn't cost us anything. When we did Harvest Day Rewind, that did cost us, Polar Express cost us, but Harvest Day Rewind was already in the budget. Polar Express was not in the budget, that only cost us at a sum total of $1,500. But we were able to do that, and we felt we needed to do that for our city in such a time where many were in need of that love and care that was provided there. And again, like I said, the city has felt nothing but love from all of these events. We have built a repertoire of dedicated donors and contributors who are allowing us to have these events at a very low cost. And one of the things that we are doing with this postcard is saving money. As I stated, we save $6,000 a year in advertisement, which eventually will only cost us $1,700 in doing the quarterly reports. So there's nothing wrong with us doing planning ahead. We do have, like I said, a reputation where many people across this county is supporting us for our events. So we are really not having to take as much out of hide as you would imagine.
Okay, just for information's sake, $5,100 is not a good pull for the Gold Room. The Gold Room, on average, when it was really moving and running like it should be, when people were booking it for weddings and private affairs, I mean, we were bringing in 2468, almost about $16,000 a month when it was, but due to COVID, I know things aren't going to be going like that because of that, but I'm just saying, you know, so $5,100 is like two events and some repasses. But the thing is, though, nothing should be booked on that calendar for any event, you know, through the city unless the council knows about it. I mean, I mean, it's like item after item on that calendar for each month, especially in April, May, and June, when a lot of people are looking at using the Gold Room for, for, you know, weddings. you know, weddings. That's, that's wedding month, April, May, June, well into August, you know, and, um, with, um, some of the other venues closing down, like, uh, La Fontaine Blues, you know, the need out there is more. So we really need to be available to have these things on Saturdays, have the room available on Saturdays. Some people even are doing them on Fridays. I'm just saying that, looking at it from a financial standpoint, and, and the rules that we have set in place does require approval from the council to use that gold room for events. Um, so, and, and, and again, you just said that the Polar Express is fifty hundred dollars. If, if that's fifty hundred dollars and you only got two thousand dollars left in administration, um, that leaves five hundred dollars in that budget line, in that budget line item for special events. And you still got mailings you wanna do, um, um, and I guess other functions you wanna have. And we're not even at, I mean, we only have the six month period now, you know, so you got six more months and you got events planned all the way out. So I'm just saying, that's something that needs to be looked at. And, you know, as a council, we really need to look at that to be sure that we're not going over budgeted line items and that we are in, in line with the budget. I mean, that's our full due share responsibility as councils. So, um, and another question I have is the website. I did go to the website and I personally, I don't like it. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, I, I mean, I don't see, I think it could be much better because that's not what they showed us when, when, when Revise came to the city. They showed us something, I mean, it was a, a really nice, uh, uh, layout. And I'm not sure is this as far as we've gotten with this website. I'm kind of concerned that more need to be done to it because it seems very basic to me. Um, now, like I said, I clicked on some of the pages. Now, your page is fine. Your page comes up nice. I clicked on my council page and it says error, you know, so, um, you know, and there's other parts of there that I just don't, I mean, I just think it, it could be much better. Um, um, it, it, I mean, it's, the land is almost exactly like the old site we have. So I'm trying to figure out, that isn't what, like I said, that isn't what they showed us when we originally signed the contract with them. So I'm not sure if that's the direction it went in or is that's just the, that's just the way y'all gonna do it because you want to get it done and get it out there. I'd rather have it done right than just have something thrown out there that's, you know, I just, and I didn't care too much for it. It seems like the old one with some, with a few extra pictures on it, but the same type of layout, the same type, the same type of dropdown menus, um. So, um, I mean, I just think it needs to be looked at. Uh, another question, this landscaper that you're talking about getting, um, I think, like I say, I think that some, some, you may need a landscaper for some of this property, but some of this property is just common sense and public works should be able to do it. I just feel that they should be able to address some of these issues on some of the city property. Now, I do want to ask a question about Hay Street Park and that bamboo that was cut down. Who authorized that bamboo and why was that bamboo cut down?
Mayor Cross?
Thank you. Uh, so the bamboo was cut down on the Glen Arden side?
Yeah, by the, um, barber shop and, uh, uh, fish market up there at Hay Street Park.
Okay, so that's separate from McLean. So that McLean is what we were originally discussing was cleaning. So at the, uh, Hay Street Park and, and the barber shop, that bamboo has been, uh, leaning over inside of, uh, potentially dangerously leaning over because many of it had dead limbs. And one of the things that we were really concerned about with that particular bamboo, I addressed this issue, then I'll go back to your other concerns there. Uh, was that someone could get hurt or injured by some of the dead limbs. So we were able to, uh, we had some time to go forward and take care of that bamboo, uh, to tailor it back to where it was no longer a danger to uh, citizens that may have been coming into that establishment or even to, uh, Hay Street Park. So, um, we did authorize that to happen, uh, with the city manager, uh, at the time. Uh, we were, uh, looking at this as a measure of community safety. Uh, for the, um, one thing I want to acknowledge though, though, on the, and that's what the Hay Street Park. For the Gold Room now, I'm looking at the Charter, Chapter ninety-two, which deals with the Gold Room, um, uh, section ninety-two, Tac Two, uh, the authority to administer Gold Room operation. It says the city manager shall have the authority to administer the Gold Room operations. And the city manager or his designee must approve all Gold Room contracts. Now, I'm looking for what you said here, um, relative to, you know, the council. And I don't have any problem talking to the council. I think we all need to really sit down about this Gold Room again. Uh, and I thank you for acknowledging that the lack of income to this Gold Room is definitely not because uh, we've been holding dates. It is because of COVID. A lot of people just aren't doing those weddings and big gatherings, uh, like before. They're keeping them small and lot or doing it online even. Um, so with that, I thank you for acknowledging the, you know, the current circumstances that may have caused us to have um, uh, degeneration of funds there in the Gold Room. But I am apprehensive about the amount of funds that we have achieved in this time, which is, you know, relatively half of what you stated when we were at our prime. Um, now, relative to the, um, quarterly postcard, uh, the, what we are doing is trying to get out front. Uh, and I did send this out to the council and other members of the administration for your feedback. And what I would hope is that we could have, uh, you know, a community discussion about the events that are on the schedule for planning. And if there are events that, um, the council would like to partner with for the city of Glen Arden, for the citizens, then we welcome that as well. Uh, the expect is not that the administration would single-handedly, though we have done it this past twenty twenty-one, um, fall season. It is not the expect that the administration would singularly use their budget for things that are for the city of Glen Arden. Uh, this is the city of Glen Arden, city of Glen Arden's events, uh, calendar. And it should be the city of Glen Arden's events. So, uh, hopefully we will find a happy medium with this. Um, because I will tell you that I've met at no less than, um, four hundred citizens that have increasingly enjoyed what the city has done in such a time as this to, uh, safely done, I will say, uh, with our testing and things that we are doing, uh, to bring some joy to the city. Uh, so I just wanted to, again, thank you for acknowledging it. I thank you for, for your, your, your questions. Um, I, I love the concern about that Gold Room. I do think it can be doing more. Um, and we are very, um, energetically looking forward to, uh, the Gold Room coordinators uh, that we have as far as resumes we've seen, uh, which will have some ability to help us market it.
One thing I do want to say is that for twenty twenty-two, there's a lot of dates booked for that Gold Room. And I think that that should not be, I think that, that the dates need to come off and they need to be, um, um, worked out with, you know, the schedule. Cause basically from reading what you sent out, you, you asked them to book these dates, um, book the, uh, hold these go room dates. And I, and that, and that's a problem because if somebody decides to come and win at a wedding on that Saturday, they're gonna be like, they're gonna be told no, that date's already taken. I took dates on hold and that isn't right for a, a business that's to turn away a paying customer. And that's why I'm saying all these dates and stuff need to be looked at and, and addressed to make sure that no, that there are enough dates open for everybody who, for people who want to pay. Um, but back to the Hay Street Park, and I do have a problem with that, with them cutting that bamboo down. I'm, I, I'm telling you, this is like the second time, I think it is, that the administration went in and cut something down that was paid for by a grant. That Hay Street Park was paid for with two grants and it's a memorial park. And we had a landscaper come out there and they planted that bamboo. And the reason why they planted the bamboo was because they wanted to put a barrier between Hay Street Park and the resident next door with something that wouldn't grow a lawn, a fence to grow out into their yard and something that's easily managed, that could be easily managed, um, when it came to, um, it growing and getting it under control. It also, it held back that dirt on the hill. And that was a major issue we had before was that the erosion from that hill into the parking lot, um, and the bamboo held all of that back. Now that I saw it been cut down and it's, uh, for the snow out there on, on that hill and it's gonna rain on it, you know, the dirt is gonna start rolling back down into the, into the, um, parking lot. And I think that, uh, the administration has got to stop just doing things because one person asked to do it. You need to research and find out why, why was that bamboo planted there? What was the, I mean, how was it planted there? That was a, that was a, that's a couple of grants that the, the council members worked very hard on to get and get a landscaper to address that whole park, you know, I mean, and once it get, once it was planted, it was up to us to maintain it. But there was a reason why that bamboo was put there and have it cut down. And now you have a dirt hill sitting there. And all, and you have water running down there and it's gonna be complete runoff and mud into the parking lot. And that's what we were trying to avoid doing. So, um, you know, I mean, it's, it's best to ask questions before you do. You know, something like that, because there was a reason why that was put there. And now that it's been pulled up, we gotta figure out how we're gonna hold the hill back now, um, from rain and erosion. Cause the bamboo is gone. So, um, yeah, and like I said, and, and a, a prime example is what I'm talking about also with these events now. I along with Councilman Harrison and Councilwoman Giyam, uh, planning to start forming a committee for Glen Arden Day. We want to go ahead and get started planning with that. We don't know where it's gonna go. We don't know what COVID is gonna do, but we want to get together and get started on that early. And we're planning on having it, like we say, we always have it on the third Saturday of September, which is September seventeen. So I don't know if any date is paying for that, but that's the date that we would like to use, that we would like to use for that event. Um, so I'm saying, you know, because the council may have other events. We got money in the budget. We may want to have another event or something, you know? But plucking these dates in here and just holding them, that's not gonna work for me because there's other things. I mean, I, I mean, to send out a postcard and just say, okay, I'm, uh, 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 what events do y'all want to have? We, I mean, it's seven of us. We gotta come together. We gotta discuss it. We gotta see, work it out and everything else. So, like I said, we, we are planning on, during the Glen Arden Day for twenty twenty-two. Um, like I said, Councilwoman Giyam and Councilman Harrison and myself would like to pull that together and get started on that, at least start planning with that. So, I mean, it takes about six months, but you know, also we gotta look at, to see if we're gonna do it at all with the COVID situation. Um, and how are we gonna handle that, you know, if we do it at all, you know, but that's a date that we're looking at. You see, so, so again, that bamboo, uh, is, questions have to be asked. There's gotta be communication all the way around. I mean, just to throw stuff out there, it's not gonna work like that. It's, it's definitely is not gonna work like that, you know? So, um, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Harry. Um, uh, are there any other questions from the council? Uh, one, one thing, uh, uh, I'm sorry. Farid, go ahead.
Um, hi, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question on the beautification efforts. Um, for the Growing Green with Pride Day, I think it was on October thirtieth. Um, the county gave us a number of shrubs and trees to be planted. I'm just looking for an update on what we did with those items, where they were planted, or if they have not been planted yet. You know, wh- what's the plan for them?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Farid. So the plan is to plant those, uh, literally around the municipal building. Uh, we have, we, we really got, uh, some very small trees this time. Uh, many of which, um, I don't know if you were able to see them, uh, once we received them. They were in, um, dire state. They were sticks essentially. Um, but that doesn't mean that they were not dormant and were able to get them into the ground. Then we would see what they look like in the spring. So we do have those, um, the, the, the plant box that are there in front of municipal center. We're anticipating putting some there. Uh, the magnolia, for example, uh, we would like to put that on the hill where it has the ability to grow because that can expand out, you know, twenty feet up and ten feet wide. So it really needs a space to expand and sprout its roots. Uh, but many of the, uh, shrubs that we received, they'll go into those boxes in front of the municipal center.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cross and Councilwoman Farid. Any other questions as it relates to the mayor's report? Okay, uh, next up is the treasurer's report. Before we go to treasurer's report, Mr. Tolson, I see that your hand is up. However, this is a working session and uh, we won't be accepting any public comments at this meeting. So if you do have questions, uh, related, um, uh, have questions for the council, please feel free to give us an email or you can hold your question to next Monday, uh, at our public, uh, meeting where you'll have opportunity to speak publicly. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stewart, are you on?
Hello, yes, I'm here.
Okay, uh, the treasurer's report and I will, if you're not in a position to share, I will, uh, share my screen. And we can uh, go through the report. Uh, this is, let's see if I can share. Three, can you see?
Thank you. I can see it now.
All right. So if you want me to move to the next page, just?
Yes, please move to the next page.
Just let me know and then I will, we'll handle it that way.
Yes. So go to the report page. So good, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, Mayor Cross, President Curtis, our new city manager Barbara, um, council members, good evening. Um, this is the treasurer's report for the period ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the first era we look at is a financial highlight, the financial statement highlight, which is looking at uh, our revenues of five million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven, seventy-three. And our total expenditures were one million, seven thirty-three, seven ninety. The total expenditure, the total, um, revenues actually exceeded total expenditures by three million, six thirty-two, nine eighty-four. As the city move into the second month of the second quarter, this would equate to us using forty-two percent and have remaining fifty-eight percent. So keep that in mind. Um, real property tax installment receipts are actually stabilizing. And they are actually, um, weaning. As in previous years, where majority of the collections of real property tax were done in the earlier months of the fiscal year. In the sub, in a subsequent review of the real property tax for December, we had collected thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand, six ninety-two dollars. So this is showing how, um, we collected the majority of the collections for real property tax between, let's say, August, September, October and November. Now in December, which we are not doing the December and just looking at the subsequent event and realize that we are now tapering down. And the collections is, uh, approximately thirty thousand dollars. At the end of November, total collections for general funds amounted to two million, nine forty-five thousand, four, five forty-nine. Where local taxes were two million, seven, seventy, seven thirty-eight. License and permits actually remain the same as it was in the previous month at twenty-eight thousand, nine thirty, nine eighty-four. State grant for the police had a little increase. It went to seventy-three thousand, nine thirty-six. And other financial sources were seventy-one thousand, eight ninety-one. A cash update. You move up. And we're saying here that the city has enough cash in its cash balances um, to pay off all of its outstanding bills, uh, as they come due. On December twen- On December twenty-eighth, we have cash balances of the main operating account had nine million, one fifty-eight thousand, two fifty-nine. For balance account remained at the same seven thousand, seventy-eight. The goal room account has one hundred and eight thou, one hundred and nine thousand, three fifty-six. Block grant remained at four thousand, one ninety-eight. And our cable P E G grant had two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight ninety-six. The if you move forward, we are looking at the American Rescue Plan and, um, earlier I was hearing Councilman Herring speak about the goal room. And this may be of good, uh, a good injection for the goal room where the ARP has, um, approached us to let us know that where there are reductions in the amount of revenues due to the COVID nineteen shutdown, there's a possibility that we could recover these funds. By just, um, doing the calculation that they have sent to us. So I will be working on that during the month of January to see how much we could recover for, um, the goal room through the ARP. There are other areas that we could get funds. Uh, we could use the funds for the ARP, but I would need the council to come together along with Mayor Cross to formulate some strategies of how we could start using these funds. We're in January and I will need to do a report by April thirtieth about what we have done, of how we have used this fund. This is a report that will look at from the inception through to March twenty twenty-two. So the earlier in the quickest we could get to working on the American Rescue Plan funds, we need to move forward with that. One good news that I have about the SunTrust Bank loan, this was for, I think, two police cars. Those loans were satisfied December twelfth, twenty twenty-one. So right now the city does not have any debt on its hand with regard to bank loans. The audit, the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. It, they are having standard shortage. They are having a problem with, um, applying or staffing or audit. Um, I did go ahead and request an, um, extension through to this, through to January thirtieth to submit our, um, audited financial statements to the Department of Legislative Service for Maryland State. I will be getting an update. I should have gotten an update today, but we had to snow. But I will be getting an update from the auditors tomorrow. And we'll be sure to bring that to the next meeting, um, next week. Monday or Tuesday. This is the end of the report for the treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. And just for the council, I was able to email Karen, uh, who's a principal at, uh, the accounting firm and, uh, I was under the impression that the, the audit is at the tail end, uh, and that we should have something soon. So. Are there any questions for Mr. Stewart as relates to, uh, the treasurer's report?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Yeah, um, could you go to the first page of the summary? I think it's right after this, his narrative. Next page. It's on a financial report.
Financial.
Yeah, I think it's like page three or four, something like that. For, yeah, the revenue right there. Okay, I have a question, um, Mr. Stewart, on a couple of these numbers, which I'm, which I'm really concerned about. Um, the first one is the real property tax, where it's showing that our current year actual, you said that the, the taxes are waning down. And the current year actual now is at two point three million dollars and we budgeted two point seven. And my concern is that in that two point three million dollars is actual street and light, street, like, streetlights assessments, streetlight assessments and, um, the special assessment, if you look down under the pilot and grants, if you scroll down a little bit more, Mr. President. Yeah, so fifty-three eighty-one and fifty-three eighty-two has zero activity. Part of that money needs to be moved down in a, in a, in a real property tax, because the county centers want a block, one block of money. For our taxes and the incomers, the real property tax, the streetlight assessments and the special assessments for, uh, trash pickup. Now, if you count that, uh, five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars into the twenty-seven, you're talking about three point two million dollars. So we are way under budget. And it's coming down to tax revenue. We really need to look at that because we should be, that number should be way over budget, uh, at the, um, the real party tax number should be way over budget and the excess will be coded to the streetlight and the special assessments at the bottom. So that's, that's something that really needs to be looked into, because that's, we, we're way under budget in both of those. So, and if that, the number holds true, then we, then we have a serious issue. I'm not sure why it's like that, because normally we get all of our money by, by, like you say, by December. Everything is usually kind of winding down, because we get our big, uh, batches in, um, September, October, November, around that period. So that needs to be looked into and why we don't have, why we're missing almost, they're saying almost a million dollars. In revenue. So I think we need to look at that. Also, the, um, if you look at, up at the top, um, line, I'm forty-one fifty hotel motel tax. We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars and we only got twenty-four thousand so far. That's another concern of mine. As well as, like I said, uh, the amusement tax and I'm not too worried about that. That might pick up. The state income tax probably come in a little later too, maybe. I mean, we have it through the year, so that probably will pick up too. But that hotel tax, I mean, twenty-four thousand out of a possible hundred thousand dollars, that's a, that's a problem.
Yes.
And also, if you go to the total licenses and permits and you see that it's budgeted two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we only got twenty, what we got, twenty-eight thousand? Now, if you look at, um, business, general business licenses, have all the invoices gone out for that? Because it shoot forty-two thirty. It has thirty thousand dollars and we only got nineteen thousand. We usually invoice them at the beginning of the, of, of the fiscal year, which is July. So I think that needs to be looked into to make sure everybody's been invoiced for their business licenses. I know sometimes I get missed sometimes. Like I say, you know, would you be in short staff, I, I can see that happening. And it was another thing was, um, and that's about it on, um, on the revenue side. I was just looking at it. I'll probably see some more stuff later, but, um, if we go to the next page, uh, Mr. President, overtime, over across the board, we almost, we give me, um, double budget on that sixty-one ninety. We give me, go over the budget. We only got seventy percent of the budget left and that's four thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. I know if we have any events like they, they, we're going to have, you know, we're going to hit that, we're going to go over that easily. You know, so I think, think that's something we need to look at also. And why is ammunition so far? Eighty-five fifty under supplies. Ammunition is already over budget, about thirteen hundred dollars. And we only have the six month period of the year. I mean, have we been shooting a whole lot of people or what?
Okay, so what happened is, if you look in the special, um, the special account, you will see where we have, um, some amounts in the ammunition. The supplies are ammunition. That has not been used, so that will have to be moved that will account for it.
Where is it?
It's in the special. So you're looking at general fund. So if you look in special fund, you'll see that there is yet an ammunition section and it has, I think, three thousand, five hundred. That has not been touched.
Yeah, on page five.
Why is it separated?
I think it has to do with, um, the grant, the P, the grant that they are getting, the special, the police grant.
Okay.
Is the police in the speed camera money, because they keep that.
Yes, right, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, um, I was looking at physical exams, but that could, I mean, we've had, we had a whole lot of new hires, so I can see that.
Yes.
And that was at, um, that's seventy-seven ninety. So that's on the, uh, that's on the next page, Mr. President, if you scroll to the next page. And the seventy-seven ninety, physical exams, we're only got twenty-two percent of the budget left. And I, and I know we had a lot of new officers, so I, I understand that. But if we hire anymore, we might not have any money left. Now, another concern of mine is if, at the bottom of that page, at seventy-eight, eighty-three and seventy-eight, eighty-four, the insurance for vehicles and property. Now, vehicles is, is zero, almost has zero percent budget left. I mean, I know we still got more, I know we'll be paying the bill for, you know, the rest of the year.
We actually paid for the, um, the complete year.
You paid for the complete year?
Yes.
Okay, what about, uh, property taxes also? I mean, our property insurance too?
Yes, we, we, um, completely covered those.
Alright, um, and, um, that's about it for me. Yeah, so those are, and the, the revenue, if you just look into that, because we, if there's an issue with our revenue, we either need to find it or we need to see what we got to cut, because that, or, or what, or what we got to pull out of our savings to cover this budget. Because right now we're looking at almost a million dollars in revenue that we haven't, that's not accounted for and that's just in property taxes.
Yes, so I, so I will have some answers to, for you by the next meeting.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. You must have been, have a hidden camera in my house, because you, uh, touched on everything that I was going to touch on, so there's no need to ask any questions outside of, um, I see Acting Chief Robinson, are you still Acting Chief Robinson?
Yes, yes.
And so as relates to Mr. Herring, uh, pointing out overtime, I know that most of that is in, uh, the police public safety department, uh, and if I'm correct with, this is a report as of November. So in December, I'm pretty sure we are over, uh, the overtime, uh, budget. Uh, is there, uh, a rationale behind why we are over budgeted six months into the year for overtime? And I understand he's only been acting for about a week, so if you don't know, that's, you know.
Well, I can only, I can only say that, you know, it's going to be, a lot of the events that we've had, a lot of the events that we've had, we've had officers that have been, uh, taking leave, so we had to, uh, have other officers, you know, take their places for the most part. But, um, we plan to meet with Mr. Stewart, I believe Wednesday, and try to figure this out and move some money.
So another question that I had was, so if there was a ramp up of overtime that we have paid for out of the city, how are we balancing that with overtime that the, the officers are getting for work outside the city? Costco, Wegmans and, uh, other, um, overtime that's being paid outside the city. Because we're overtaxed over here, so how's there enough room for them to go over there and do overtime there?
Uh, the Costcos, Wegmans, um, Woodmore Town Center, Best Buy, Hook and Reel, all those, all those businesses pay the officers separately. It has nothing to do with our budget or anything like that. That's separate. That's completely separate. They, um, they pay the officers themselves. The officer, the independent, the officer, the independent contractors.
So I get it, uh, but my question is, we're clearly paying overtime here, right? So, uh, if they're working overtime here, how is it, do they have enough flexibility and overtime to work there as well, without working twenty-four hours a day?
Yes, they had the, you know, they work on their days off or when they, or when they, or when they're off here. You know, we worked this, they worked this, you know, they worked their own schedules out for the most part.
And another, I talked to the mayor about this. I, I think that needs to be, uh, greater transparency. I'm awful officers being able to, you know, moonlight and do different things to make extra money. I agree that, you know, the, the salaries here in the city aren't as, um, desirable for, you know, as it relates to other agencies and some that we could address probably in the future. However, when these officers are doing overtime, uh, in the town center, they are, they're in a police squad car in, uh, Glen Arden uniform, and so they are representing the city of Glen Arden on their personal time. Which I believe is a conflict, uh, because, and if something should go down, they're going to, at worst case scenario, use their, uh, their service weapon.
Take police action.
Mm-hmm, take police action. Uh, and so it's just, for me, it's just too much gray area as relates to overtime in the city, overtime outside the city. Uh, and I talked to Mayor Cross, uh, about this. I think there needs to be greater transparency. I, I don't have, if, if, if the officers are going to be in uniform using city equipment, uh, I think the best way is for those businesses to pay the city directly and, and it goes directly to the officer, so it doesn't necessarily, uh, come to any other, uh, coffers but the police office coffers. And then, uh, we paint that out, you know, city. That way, we could better track time. Because right now, if I ask for an audit of overtime, could you, could your department give me overtime that shows me hours where officers versus hours worked moonlighting in the, uh, town center?
No, we could actually, we definitely can show you the hours that they worked at the city, but the hours that they worked moonlighting, that we wouldn't have, we wouldn't really, we would have a schedule, but it wouldn't be as accurate as the schedule would be for the police department.
Which creates a gray area in that officer could get overtime, not to say that you're doing this. Officer could be getting paid overtime here and also at the same time getting paid overtime outside the city.
Double dipping?
I, I'm not, I'm not accusing any officers.
I'm saying that's what you're talking about, double dipping.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's that will, that better not be happening. And if that, if, if there is any inkling that that's happening, it needs to be brought to our attention.
And, and so that leads me to the transparency issue. I, if, if we can audit it, then it better not be happening, isn't a good enough control over it happening. Uh, as well as, uh, it is also my understanding that officers don't clock in and clock out themselves. It's, that's held at the chief. So there's too much gray area in this whole structure, which needs to be ironed out, uh, for greater transparency, so that officers could, uh, get paid for the overtime. But it can be clear for the city as, uh, as the council, the mayor and the city manager, you know, have fiduciary responsibility in the city. We need to make sure that it is being administered. Uh, you know, uh, have fiduciary responsibility in the city, we need to make sure that it is being administered correctly. And again, I'm not accusing any officers of doing anything, I'm just saying that there's a lot of gray area here that we need to clear up, so that things are. Uh, clearly in black and white. Okay, so, and I, I give my apologies, because I know this is. You only done this for a, a week, so you're not the appropriate person to speak to.
Well, I got, well, like, you know, like I said, officers are not double dipping, I know that for a fact, you know, I, I can honestly say that. Um, the cap, the chief does the sket, does a scheduling for certain part times, and Sergeant Richardson does scheduling for the other part times. And like I said, you take everyone's, you know, everyone's schedule, we have their schedules al- already. And when they put, they basically give us, give the chief and Sergeant Richardson their bill, their availability. Which, of course, is not linked to the se, the time that they're working, so therefore. When we schedule them, or when they get scheduled for their part times, they're not working.
Who schedules their overtime?
Uh, the chief, uh, the chief does it, and Sergeant Richardson does it.
So the chief schedules their overtime, and he also, and he also manages everybody's time cards.
I do the time cards, I manage their time cards.
Okay.
I manage the time, I manage the time cards at, at Glen Arden. The chief makes the schedule, the chief makes the schedule for Glen Arden. And he also makes uh, the schedule for some of the part times, and Sergeant Richardson makes uh, schedule for some of the other part times.
So you handle all the time, you clock in and clock out for all the officers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that is still an issue, and, and I, and I, I, I trust you, uh.
Thank you.
Trust you, uh, but I'm just highlighting the greater issue, because if, if, if we need to like, iron things out. Then we need to be able to go beyond, oh, trust me, they're not double dipping, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, like I say, yes, it makes sense, but I know they're not double dipping.
I, I agree, I understand that, it, that's, that's not good enough for documentation.
Alright.
Alright. Alright, so.
That's the interesting concept of having the businesses pay the city, and then, then the city pays the officers, I mean. That would be, that would be great for us, because then we wouldn't have to pay taxes on it, so. If we have a plan, that works for me.
In the same way that Wegmans, didn't Wegmans just give us five thousand dollars for the police department, and didn't that come to the city?
Yeah, they gave us, yeah, they gave us, yeah, they gave the city money, they gave the city money. But I believe it was for um, for weapons, for upgraded our weapons.
Yeah, and that's, and that's great, I think that, that um, that structure works. They could, they could still give the city money, uh, and I'll assure you, it will not go anywhere else, it will only go to officers. I, I, as long as I am as council president, councilman, I, you know. Will sing to root sat, oh, yell at the rooftops if it does not, uh, I just think that it, it, it provides for greater transparency. And, and again, I, I'm a hundred percent behind officers, I, I don't think that the officers are getting paid their fair share. As relates to uh, what they do, um, as it is compared to other municipalities in the area. Uh, so I support them moonlighting and doing other things, it's just the transparency piece for me. Alright, and, and I'll talk to.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I, like I said, I don't, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, alright, thank you, sorry for putting on a spot again.
It's okay.
Any other questions about a council? Alright, I'll stop sharing this report. And we will go.
You Mark?
Mayor Joyce, I'm sorry.
Again.
Thank you, alright, thanks. Alright, uh, with that, I'm sorry, uh, Acting Chief Robinson, do you have a police, Chief of Police report? That you want to do or?
Yes, I do have the report, uh, Chief Jackson submitted the report to you guys, correct? So I can just, I can go over a few, a few things, or you want me to go over the whole thing?
Just, just high, just high level, you don't have to go through the whole thing.
Okay, alright, so um, I start from December, December thirteenth. Uh, G, uh, Glen Arden officers responded to two natural death reports, the first being in seventy nine hundred block of Cawker. And the second being in the fifteen hundred block of Fourth Street, uh, both deceased were elderly males. Um, apparently natural, no, nothing suspicious about the deaths. Uh, December fourteenth, Chief Jackson, uh, and I provided sec- security for the municipal parking lot. For the medical staff that was conducting free testing COVID from uh, four to six, actually, that went on for about two weeks after. We just, the last, the last uh, testing was, was Friday of this week. Um, on the sixteenth of December, um, they met with the medical staff in the nutrition center. Who was administering the booster shots, that meeting apparently went well. Uh, on December eighteenth, Officer Lee and Harris participated in Hyattville City Police Department. Uh, sat with a, shot with a, shot with a cop with Hyattville Police. On December eighteenth, uh, several police officers participated in a very well attended and successful. Polar Bear Express held in the Gold Room. And on December twentieth, officers assisted the US Marshals Task Force. With execution of a search warrant for an assault with intent to murder for a resident that lived in the ninety three hundred block of Geeden Park. The suspect, he was arrested and charged with three different charges, like I said, one being uh, assault with intent to murder. And that concludes the chief's report, if you have any questions. Feel free to ask me, and I'll try to answer them.
Councilman Jones?
Uh, yes, good evening, everyone, uh, Lieutenant Robinson, the second uh, entry on the Acting Chief's report. It indicates that they received an email from a sergeant advising that their Panasonic thirty uh, tough books. In-car computers will no longer be serviceable or upgraded to the sixty four R I T RAM. And this model will be discontinued and replaced with a Panasonic tou- toughbook fifty five, does that mean the city has to uh, engage in buying new toughbooks? For the police cars, or what, what, what is, what was this entry, uh, why were they, why was he giving us enlightenment on this entry?
I don't know why I gave, I don't know why it was added on here, but anyway, we have like, two or three CF thirties. And like I said, like I said, they're, they're no, they don't work anymore, we've all, with the new vehicles, we've got two, we got two new fifty five, so. This really is not, it's not, this doesn't even affect us, this doesn't affect us, because we have enough computers, and we do not have to buy any, we don't have to buy any new computers.
Okay, thank you, um, also, I've noticed that at the A one liquors on seven oh four, that. Uh, in the last couple of months, maybe, I haven't seen a car up there in the evening, wha- what's, that the owner don't, no longer wants you all to uh. Uh, patrol that area, or you all have stopped patrolling that area, what's just, what's going on with that?
That is correct, the owner has uh, has uh, we, we've stopped working for them, they don't, they didn't want to pay the police officers to work part time there anymore. So therefore, we don't work there anymore.
Okay, okay, so, uh, oh, and the other thing that, that the uh, council president brought up about the budget. As far as uh, talking about transparency, I think we need uh, with the police department also, maybe we should look into the transparency of hiring. Their hiring practices at this juncture, and uh, also, it was brought to, when this uh, issue of um. The um, Costcos and Wegmans, the shopping center personnel wanted uh, the police to uh, overlook. Or kind of work part time for them, uh, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I'll go back through a meeting, um. The Acting Chief Jackson said that he was the person that did the scheduling for the persons, the officers that worked over there. Because I asked him if there was equitable, equitable uh, scheduling with. You know, the police officers that everybody would have an opportunity, that wanted it to work as a uh, police officer of the city of Glen Arden. To work in that capacity of overtime.
Yeah, that's true, um, Captain Jackson does, he does the scheduling for Costcos, so he does, he does the scheduling for Costcos. Sergeant Richardson does the scheduling for Wegmans, and all police officers uh, that have, that have successfully completed their probation. Is available to work part time at those establishments.
Alright, sir, thank you so much, I appreciate your service.
No problem, thank you.
Uh, Acting Chief Robinson, just one more question, why, why, it, why? Is the time keeping house with one person for police officers, how come each officer does it clock in and clock out?
Um, I'm gonna say is, that's, that's just the way where I've come from, that's how, we have, we've, I've never. I've been a police officer for thirty three years, and I've never clocked, we've never used a clock or anything like that, it's just the normal practice.
In, in DC, uh, the.
Maryland, everywhere, no one clocks in, they, nine times out of ten, most agencies, you know. They clock in through their radios or their computers.
Okay, alright, thank you.
No problem.
Alright, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, Mr. President, um, uh, Acting Chief Robinson. In these, Acting Chiefs make, mixed up now. You said that A one liquors does not want you patrolling the store anymore, is that what you said?
They don't want, they don't want to pay us part time, you know, they don't want an officer from eight to twelve o'clock, correct?
Eight to twelve o'clock midnight?
Yes.
And let me ask a question, so do they have anybody on that lot?
No.
Okay, then we have a problem, because the liquor board requires them to have police presence on that lot those hours. So if they're not doing it, then we need to go to the liquor board.
I said the same thing.
Okay, because that, and I, and I actually had the memorandum of understanding that Mr. Singh signed, and if you want to go back before the liquor board, and we can start trying to get them closed down. I bet you'll sing a different song.
I would love for him, I would love to do that, I would love to go there and do that.
Then we need to do that as, as, as a city, and, and address the liquor board on that issue, he's supposed to have, so, he's supposed to have police in that lot. Those hours, he's required to have those per the liquor wars, he thinking, he thinking, he thinking all of, all of us council members, unless there was around when he was doing all that mess. It was a surprise, surprise, you wait and see, I'm gonna send it to, I'll send you the information, um.
And like, and, and by us being there, believe it or not, it's almost like a little substation, because you just don't realize. How many citizens know that there's gonna be a police officer sitting there from eight to twelve, and whenever there's an issue. They come to us right there, and we're able to resolve it.
Well, I mean, that, 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 that was the issue when a house on my street caught on fire. Like, go to the liquor store, notify the police, I did. Are you able to call the fire department?
Absolutely.
But that's what I'm saying, you know, so yeah, we need to look into that and get that taken care of, because he's starting his old tricks again, so alright.
I'm for that.
Okay, alright, I'll, I'll get that information together.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, Councilman Aaron, it was funny, I was driving down the street the other night, and I noticed that the police car wasn't there.
Exactly.
Um, and I was expecting it to be there, but it wasn't, so okay, um, thank you, Acting Chief Robinson, appreciate. Uh, your service, and you filling in uh, as chief uh, in absence of Mr. Jackson.
No problem, enjoyed it.
Alright. Uh, with that, uh, we'll move on to topics of discussion, first one is snow removal and procedure for the city. Uh, I'll turn it over.
One other thing before we do that, you know, we skipped over the legislation, I did have a question on that legislation.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, and, and, and I guess it's to the mayor, since she submitted it, it's about the sidewalk, sidewalks. And I'm wondering, why did you pick a, 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 the contractor that's a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, when there were two contractors that were much less than that? And does this contract involve curb cuts for handicap access, because it doesn't say, doesn't say it's, it's doing any curb cuts for handicap access, it says it's replacing sidewalks. So why are we going with a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollar vendor, I mean, proposal, when we have two proposals that were le- less than that, one is a hundred and thirty nine thousand, I think the other one's like ninety nine thousand. And what, what justification is that? That, that you would pick them?
Mayor Cross?
Thank you for the question, uh, so no, does not uh, do the handicap access. Um, we picked that particular contractor because it was local, it was a black owned business. And it also um, came with a reputation, that bid process that is in my report was actually conducted by that particular company. All the other companies, um, interestingly enough, utilized that company's um. Uh, outline for what they submitted, so uh, to looking at this head on. The company provided the most um, ready uh, report, if you will, for getting this job done. Uh, this resolution is a proposal for getting not just um, the few streets done, but over thirty streets done. In segmented phased approach, uh, so we picked a company that had a complete plan. Uh, from the beginning, uh, not one that we would hope would rise to the occasion, but one that presented. The proposal that was most complete and ready, and again, a black owned business.
So, can, so are you saying we did not give them a scope of work, they gave us the scope of work?
No, we gave them a scope of work, but when the proposals came in. The company that we selected provided the most, uh, the best answer for that scope of work. Um, we did not include the handicap ra- ramp accesses, um, we are following up with that. But this is for uh, safety concerns, and the sidewalks that are dilapidated state. Where uh, many residents have indeed uh, incurred injuries, as I'm told. Um, from them not being in a proper report, so this is to correct those sidewalks. That some of which have a one and a half foot rise because of the tree um, uh, growth that has happened under them. And others that have runoff uh, going into mud and dirt, which makes it hard for them. Uh, particularly if, when we do have areas where there are handicapped driving on them, having to go through the mud and dirt. So this particular approach addresses uh, sidewalks across our city. That are, again, in dilapid, highly dilapidated state, and are now a threat to public security or safety.
Okay, but you said some, the two other vendors followed their what, their bid proposal or something? You said the two other vendors followed their bid proposals, they, or they copied their bid proposal or something?
So the two, forgive me, uh, the two other vendors, when their proposals came in. Uh, they all were given the scope of work, we outlined all of the streets that we would like to have addressed. Uh, when it came down to the two other vendors, though, the care and the management of the reporting. Was not um, as sufficient as the elected vendor. Though, we did provide three vendors, um, again, uh, I've always learned that if you want something fast, it's not gonna be cheap. If you want something cheap, it may not be good, so in this case, this vendor that was submitted comes with a highly. Um, documented reputation, and also has references that can, and have attested to their work. Um, uh, with municipalities that are uh, comparable to the city of Glen Arden as well. So, we went with a, with a vendor that we could trust to get this work done. Um, as a matter of public safety.
Okay, um, now, I mean, I, I'm familiar with Concreto, because they've done a number of sidewalks in the neighborhood, and they, they were reasonable at that time. But I think this, this, this proposal, and I don't see any references on here. On this proposal packet that I got, but I do see references with the other vendors who um, submitted. Um, their proposals, so I'm just, I, I mean, my thing is, you know, you, you. You might, I mean, some, some people, some vendors are over, overcharged, I mean, that's just what they do. Um, especially when they're familiar with, with, with a company, I mean, with an organization, and sometimes you pay, you can get less than the same quality also. Because it's just, it's just such a big swing on these prices, one thirty nine, between one thirty nine and one seventy eight, and I'm just, and one of them is like ninety nine thousand, I don't know what they're doing, but. You know, just looking at these proposals. you know, just looking at these proposals that's so far off. And I mean, I mean, did you advertise the, um, did you advertise it in a newspaper? Or did you just seek out vendors?
We sought out vendors. We, we actually utilized a previous resolution, uh, for sidewalk, sidewalk repairs. Um, that was a part of our, um, uh, inventory, uh, resolutions from back when, um, Targay was in the seat as well. Uh, so we reached out to those vendors and, uh, we pulled in, uh, Tibbs Paving, which was one that, uh, our research provided us. And, uh, Lanham Construction, uh, is another one that the research provided us. But, uh, Concreto, uh, provided us with, you know, the bid that most readily did not have the appearance of something that we would have to go back and follow up with and follow up with. Um, and doing the walkthrough with Concreto, uh, the communication was clear that, uh, this is something that we could depend on to get it right. Uh, the materials are going to be provided and, and in fact, what they're going to do is actually pour, uh, four-inch-thick uh, concrete slabs for new sidewalks, which would build a longevity to, uh, the city of Glen Arden. So they're not gonna do patchwork like we're seeing across many of our streets, even from Deepi. Uh, and some of the repairs that they have done that is now cracked up and instead of it looking, uh, presentable for, you know, the enduring future. Uh, it literally looks like somebody was with Play-Doh with holes in it. So we, we want to invest. And again, if you want something cheap, it may not be good. Uh, and if you want something fast, it's not gonna be, you know, uh, cheap. So, I mean, you really got to, uh, take the investment in the city of Glen Arden on this one. And because the sidewalks, uh, we are rightsizing sidewalks, many of which, uh, are approaching, you know, that eighty-year mark, if not all, that we are approaching particularly, uh, this is something that we don't want to have to, uh, continue to readdress. They're not only gonna do that, but they're gonna put six-inch by six-inch welded wire mesh as a reinforcement to ensure that longevity of the sidewalk for the future. So therein lies some of the ex- extended costs, those two pieces there. Uh, but again, that is the foundation that we're looking at for the city of Glen Arden going forward. Uh, that we don't do any patchwork anymore, but we do stuff that has some longevity to it and that will last. So, um, Concreto provided us with that in its walkthrough.
Okay, cuz I'm looking at, I'm looking at the contracts between Concreto and Tibbs Paving and they both offering the same thing. Uh, six-by-six inch welded mesh at thirty-five hundred PSI's, four-inch thick slabs, um, gravel base. Seemed like it's the exact same thing that they're offering and it's thirty-nine thousand dollars, almost. Yeah, thirty-nine thousand dollars less than what Concreto is offering. And, you know, and then you got another one that's like ninety-nine thousand dollars. My thing is, I mean, like I said, I, I also don't wanna pay for a piece of ham, you know, and, and, and get a slice of bacon.
Well, I will say this for Tibbs. I, I was impressed with Tibbs, but Tibbs is coming out of Fairfax County. Um, and that's the other thing, uh, we want to look at in vicinity to location, um, you know, and getting this work done. Um, and timely getting it done as well. So that was another thing that went into the consideration. Um, and you'll, you'll note that, uh, the administration did submit, you know, two resolutions, one for Tibbs, one for Concreto. But, um, the other one was just to satisfy, um, you know, we did another, a research bid to get something lower, but it, it will not have the satisfaction, um, trust that, uh, even Concreto or Tibbs. Um, the administration is satisfied with Tibbs or Concreto. We just acknowledge, uh, Concreto is a local company where it's Tibbs is coming out of Fairfax, Virginia.
Yeah, I don't care whether they're local or not. Thirty-nine thousand dollars is thirty-nine thousand dollars. And for thirty minutes, a thirty-minute drive, I would rather get thirty-nine thousand dollars in my pocket than take thirty-nine thousand cuz I gotta go thirty minutes away to Fairfax County. And the third vendor, I don't even think, why would they even? They don't. Like I said, I, I. You know, that's, that's another issue in and of itself. I don't even. I mean, and they're way lower than, than everybody else.
Right, so, so the, the third vendor, um, Lanham Construction. Uh, what they did was just a baseline sidewalk replacement, uh, which is removing the current sidewalk from the site. Um, putting in a granular base, which is something that's, you know, interestingly enough, it's not what I just mentioned earlier, that Tibbs and even Concreto would offer. Uh, so the reinforcement is really what you're paying for, uh, in this case. And you could be looking at the difference between the amount of business one does versus the other. Uh, Tibbs is a bigger company than Concreto, um, which means they may have more opportunities and can offer a lower bid. But that doesn't necessarily mean that, um, you know, because they've got more people, therein lies, again, the concern um, for the city of Glen Arden. Um, I don't expect that either would perform unsatisfactually. I do note, like I said, the administration turned in both Tibbs and Concreto for consideration, but we acknowledge Concreto for the reputation that it has locally. And, and it is a smaller company than Tibbs, so therein lies some of the cost as well, I'm sure.
So what type of warranty is Concreto giving? Cuz, um, Tibbs gives you a one-year warranty.
They'd be the same.
It isn't on, it isn't on the contract. I mean, as a matter of fact, where is the rest of that? I mean, I'm looking at. See, Concreto, they just gave us just one sheet. It was just one, a one-sheet submission? I mean, that's all I'm saying is just one sheet. I mean, there's nothing, I mean.
Councilman Herring, I think they sent that spreadsheet also cuz I thought the same thing. Just in case, um, you're looking for the other document. I'm with you with your line of questioning, by the way. I just wanted to just tell you about the other document cuz I look the, it's the same way.
Okay, well.
I, I can try to send it to you. I'll send it to you via email right now.
It, it's attached to that one, the, the spreadsheet for the inspections.
All right.
Uh, scroll down.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm finished. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones, uh, thank you, Mr. Herring, for pointing that out. I completely forgot about the legislation, so appreciate you pointing that out. Councilwoman Jones?
Chime in on the, um, proposals. When I first came on the council, we had some sidewalk issues and Mr. Tobias, who was our city manager at that time. He went and looked, got the bids for, uh, had those issues taken care of and Concreto was the person that we used. They did, they did the work on Glen Arden Parkway where the, uh, sidewalk was like a pool and the kids were walking through there. Uh, who's got? Somebody's. I'm getting interference. Um, but anyway, Concreto did that work. They did the work in front of, um, uh, Mr. Fields's house. I think it's eighty-six twenty-nine Glen Arden Parkway. They did that, uh, uh, work there. And I, I can't remember if it was some other work in Glen Arden that they did, but we've used this company before. And, um, Mr. Tobias, like I said, Mr. Tobias was the one who, uh, uh, founded this company to have the work, some work done in the city of Glen Arden. Uh, and even with this, this project, at this time, the, wouldn't, the city manager would be the project manager for this to what? To oversee and make sure that the things were done, uh, in a timely manner and things are done, uh, as they're supposed to, uh, be done. Also, when you look at the proposal for Lanham Construction Company, it says at the bottom that the customer has to obtain all of the, uh, permits. So any permits that we needed for this company, uh, would have to be, be, uh, obtained through the, by the city. Any permits that, uh, fall into the HOAs or, or county permits or, uh, the state permits, they do not, um, get any of that information. So that might be another reason why their bid is also a little bit lower.
And additionally, thank you for that, Councilwoman Jones. Um, the proposal, uh, for, um, Lanham Construction does have in it that this is based on having unobstructed or restricted access to work areas. So, uh, any little thing could add up costs. So this is one of those that we wanna be careful that we don't, um, add more to it than what we are seeing. What I can appreciate by both Concreto and Tibbs is what you see is what you, what you, what you're gonna get. Thank you for pointing that out, Councilwoman Jones.
So. Is, is permitting included in Concreto? Cuz it doesn't, it's not outlined on the, um, proposal.
Yes, they will do all of the work, um, uh, to get this job done, start to finish. Uh, and they will also, uh, for Tibbs as well. So that's one thing, like I said, reason why their cost is a little bit more. And then also, uh, as I communicated earlier, one company is a little bit larger than the other. So therein, you know, can be a cost difference as well. But, um, uh, yes, they, this is correct, Council President.
Okay.
Mr. President, can I ask one?
Yes, sir, Council.
You know, I guess my question is, if we're gonna, if we, if they're bigger and they can come in at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars and give us the same type of work, the same quality of work. Why can't we ask them to do the curb cuts and that may be another thirty-nine thousand dollars, put the ADA ramps in? Since they're going from curb to renit, they're going from curb, from curbs to aprons. So why can't we just go with the cheaper one? Say, hey, you wanna put in some curb cuts also for ADA access? How much more would that be? I mean, we need to do what we need to do to get these, get these done for, I mean, at the cheapest price we can. I'm, I don't care if you're local or not, I gotta look out for the citizen's tax dollars.
Mm-hmm. And we can definitely take that back, uh, to the proposal process to see, uh, about the curb cuts as well, Council, um, and hearing. That's, that's, that's doable as well.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
The other thing I saw with, uh, Concreto's, um, scope of work, they only have on here, uh, thirty-two oh-three Johnson Court. And if you look at Johnson Court, if you do a walkthrough of Johnson Court, I think from thirty-three, I'm sorry, thirty-two oh-three Johnson Court all the way up to thirty-two eleven. That whole sidewalk, that, that sidewalk just needs to be, all of that needs to be replaced. Yeah, I mean, because you have a, in front of one house, the sidewalk caves in like this and has a tree, and, and, and has a dip and that's how they get the water. I think that's, uh, Ms., uh, Hunter's property. When she was the one, uh, asking about making sure that her sidewalks were taken care of. I think thirty-two oh-five is her property. I might be wrong. But still, as you go up from thirty-two oh-three all the way up to thirty-two eleven, uh, that, that sidewalk is all uneven and all, um, it, it needs to be, it all needs to be addressed.
And, and we did, uh, take into consideration, uh, Ms. Hunter's, uh, inquiry for Johnson Court. So that one is in part of the list for repairs.
It's only C thirty-two oh-three. On this list.
Does this take into, uh, consideration other areas of the city that may need the same work or do we just? You know, are we just only focusing on this area?
No, it takes into consideration, uh, thirty areas across the city of Glen Arden. And those are the areas that were in the most dire state. Uh, we actually used code enforcement, uh, to, uh, walk the area as well. Um, to help us build a list of those areas that were most threat to, uh, public safety.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions as relates to, uh, the legislation? Okay. Uh, with that, we'll move, uh, into snow removal, uh, the status of that as relates to, um, the snowstorm that we just had. And, uh, apparently there's another one coming. Uh, so, um, and then I'll, I'll go to Ms. Barber for that and Ms., uh, Mayor Cross, I'll come back to you as it relates to procedures, just like what the city is responsible for versus what citizens are responsible for. Uh, just as a reminder for the citizens as it relates to snow removal. Uh, Ms. Barber? Could you give an update on that?
I, yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman, um, Council President Curtis. Um, as I did mention earlier in the meeting, um, we did have a snow contractor out there today. Um, and unfortunately, we were not able to mobilize as many trucks as we felt like we needed to have. This was a large storm event. Um, the largest in three years is what I am understanding from the weather forecasters. And, um, when I had talked with, um, Mr. Cannon yesterday. Um, I was told that we would have two trucks. Um, unfortunately, we were only able to mobilize one truck today. And that was part of the problem that we had in the snow removal process. Um, this is normally a three-truck city. And, um, that is what it takes to clear to the expectation of the residents. And that did not happen today in a expedient amount of time. And I do apologize for that. I apologize to the council. And I apologize to the residents for that. Um, they are working through the night. Um, in order to make sure that they get the snow removed down to the pavement and salt is spread so that when it comes time for the morning commute, that everyone will be able to get out. I did talk with, um, Acting Chief Robinson and, um, um, at, at then Acting Chief, um, Jackson today to get a um, report on the roads. It did look like most of the roads had been touched today. Um, but they were, are, are out there still working and will continue to do so until the road is cleared down to the pavement and salt is spread. As, uh, far as, um, going forward, um, we will be in a much better place. Um, this was, um, emergency procurement. So we are well within the emergency procurement, uh, limit of five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And I think we will be, um, well, uh, to go into Friday's snowstorm as well. Um, so I don't think that there will be any need for a special meeting to, um, have any sort of additional, uh, encumbrance of funds. Um, I think we should be fine with that. So if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Councilwoman Farid?
Yes, thank you for that, Ms. Barber. Are you aware of which streets were not taken care of earlier today and the ones that will be prioritized through the night? I, during this meeting, I did get an email from a resident in Ward Three on Tenth Street who is saying the streets have not been plowed and she was not able to get delivery, um, today because of, of that. And so I would like to be able to get back to her to let her know when she should expect the streets to be cleared. Um, and if, you know, if there are any other streets, I mean, I'm, I'm not just, that came up in an email, but I'm sure there are other streets that are not cleared and people have the same concerns.
Right, and I did reach out, um, like I said, um, to the police and they had indicated to me that the streets did look good, um, and that's subjective. Um, so I know that, um, we can do better and I will, um, as soon as we get off the meeting, I will touch base with the contractor and see where they are on that list of streets and make sure that we get your street that was mentioned on the list. And I will get back in touch with the entire council, um, after we get offline and let you know where we are moving forward into the night.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Yes, um, Council President.
Councilman Harry?
Yes, uh, Ms. Barber, a question, I, I did, I now pose a, a question to you about the salt. So normally we contract with the state for salt. You're saying we contracting with the county? I thought the county contracted with the state also.
That was my understanding from talking with the contractor this morning. I can get some additional details this evening and, and get back in touch with you when I get you that update for the street list.
Yeah, because I mean, usually we have, usually you gotta contract by a certain date in order to be on, to participate with the state on their salt distribution program. So I just wanna make sure that we are part of that cuz that's the cheapest salt you can get. Everybody else gouges you, you know, and I think the, the county even gets it from the state. So I just wanna be, um, sure on that issue. I think that was it. Yeah, and that's it. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, no, no, the one other thing. Could you do me a favor when you get a chance and I'm, I'm gonna reach out to the clerk? We passed a resolution back in twenty-twenty for this, for this company for sn- for snow removal. And the company also had a two-year extension option in that resolution. So really, all we gotta do is just simply pull our resolution and then the council can just agree to vote on it and move forward. So, and it, it was on Resolution R thirty-five twenty-twenty. So and it was on Resolution R thirty five twenty twenty.
Yes, sir, I'll get on that.
Yeah, alright, thanks.
Sorry, Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes, I did send that to uh City Council, I mean, the City Manager, um yesterday afternoon. He should have received it. Um he said R thirty five twenty twenty.
Yes.
Yeah, you were, you were, uh you sponsored it as President.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I said this to him.
Okay, great. Could you send that to me also when you get a chance?
I can.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, uh Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. Looking at R thirty five twenty twenty, it says that um for one-year period beginning December twenty nineteen and two additional one-year terms at the option of the city for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty and for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So I'm thinking that um this, this uh resolution, R thirty five, only goes up to twenty twenty one, which would have been for um what, uh February of twenty twenty one? So it's uh, we need a new contract?
Okay.
From reading the resolution. Okay.
Off by a year, it sounds like it's only two years. You have the original year, which is twenty nine, was it twenty?
Twenty nineteen, uh huh.
Twenty, that's the original. Then you have two one-year options, which would be twenty twenty one, then twenty one to twenty two.
It didn't show twenty two on here, it just shows uh twenty twenty twenty, uh shows twenty nineteen to twenty twenty and then twenty twenty to twenty twenty one.
Yeah, and then it should have one more year, uh another one-year option. Should have been three, because we can go, we can go to maximum, we can go as three years. One year and then two, two options.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, um.
Oh, wait, 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 I have another question.
Councilwoman Jones.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I'm looking at R forty two twenty eighteen, which was sponsored by Deborah Eason. And in her, uh it shows the the period beginning November fifteenth, twenty seventeen, with two additional one-year terms. And it says the city for twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. So maybe uh that was a typo in.
What?
Okay.
Ms. Barber, I'm pretty sure we can connect with them and.
I'll, I'll send this to you too.
Okay. Appreciate it. Uh and so we'll look forward to having that legislation uh introduction next week, so we can have something in place uh for the rest of the um, the winter. Uh Councilwoman Jones?
Sorry, I have another uh um uh when uh the City Manager looks over this, these legislations and then looks over the one, the resolution that was presented to us, um it can be re, re, rewarded, completely rewarded uh to look like what uh Councilman Haring presented in twenty uh twenty. Uh then, because the one that, the resolution that we have for this year is kind of wordy and and some of the things are just, you know, not necessarily. But if you look at the resolution that uh Councilman Haring presented, it's more in line to what we're looking for.
Okay. So we'll resubmit the resolution uh that uh that's more than identical uh to Mr. Haring's support as President in twenty nineteen. And move forward with that legislation as an introduction on Monday. And if we have to um have a special meeting to pass it before the public hearing the following week, we can. If not, then they'll, we'll vote the following week. Alright. Uh Mayor Cross, any, could you just briefly uh go over the uh procedures? So what the city is responsible for versus what citizens are responsible for as it relates to snow removal in the city of Glen Arden?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So clearing the walkways in front of private property um is really what we're asking our homeowners uh to take care of and also our HOAs. Uh we're asking this to be done within eight hours following a snow or ice storm uh like we had today. Uh we're asking for any adjacent curbs and ramps, and even uh the city will take care of any bus shelters or establishments such as that. Um and we also have uh roads where our county will come in and take care of those things as well. But as far as the residents are concerned, uh snow and ice adjacent to their walkways within eight hours of them falling, uh please ensure that we have um at least up to three feet wide, uh which is safe walking space for uh citizens, so to prevent uh slipping or injury. And salting, uh please, uh we utilize salt with sand, uh which also provides some traction.
Thank you. Uh next, COVID testing events and building protocols.
Okay, thank you. Um so, as many of you know, uh the city has partnered with Washington Integrative Health to provide a service of COVID nineteen testing for our citizens and surrounding communities. We started that on Tuesday, December fourteenth, and um as of this last Friday, December thirty first, eight thousand COVID nineteen tests had been administered. Um that's right, eight thousand. Um as of December twenty eighth, Prince George's County was at a twenty-nine percent positivity rate. That is the highest in the state of Maryland. So um when we embarked on this uh partnership with Washington Integrative Health, that was pre-surge, we were um not aware that the numbers would increase exponentially within a matter of days. Um so it was right on time that the city was able to provide that service as so many uh parents of students in Prince George's County schools that have been closed um and just people everywhere needed to be tested. Um so I want to thank all of the, the neighbors um who had to be inconvenienced because of the traffic as it relates to the number of people that were coming to be tested. Um I want to thank um Acting Chief Lieutenant Robinson um for really stepping in and um, you know, without being asked, because I, I, I actually wasn't aware that there was a traffic issue um that he was addressing until, you know, it was raised later. So I really appreciate that, um stepping in to help. Um I also want to express specific thanks to Vice President Ferguson, Councilwoman Guillaume, and Councilman Haring. Um on the Saturday after we started testing, I received a call from Dr. Cohen, um who is the doctor who manages Washington Integrative Health, um telling me that she was being told she had to leave um the parking lot um and that she could know, you know, not perform testing, she didn't know what to do. There were many people lined up, ready to be tested um per the hours that we had previously agreed upon. I was not physically able to make it and try to solve whatever the issue was. Um but those three council members got about their beds and they went over to the municipal center and worked through a solution. So I really appreciate you, and I'm certain that all the people that had to be tested that morning appreciate you as well. Um as of today, the testing is moving from the Glen Arden Municipal Center over to the First Baptist Church of Glen Arden Ministry Center Parking Lot, which is just a few blocks up from the municipal center. Um we were able to um do that, the, we received support from our County Councilwoman, Jolene Ivy, um to help us secure that space and also um to uh secure additional police presence so that we would not incur any additional overtime hours for our police force um and not stretch our, our resources so that in the event that, um you know, we have gaps in our ability to kind of support that effort, the Prince George's County Police Department will be available to us as well as the um Park Police. So I want to thank everybody for that. This has been tremendous. Again, none of us could have imagined that um, you know, we would be in the place that we are right now. So I just, I thank God that, you know, we were um approached with this opportunity, you know, before we even knew what was gonna happen, and because of that, so many people were able to be tested and supported. Um there have been delays in getting results. Um that is not specific to Washington Integrative Health or our efforts. That is nationwide. Um labs are overwhelmed with the number of increased tests. Um but not only are they overwhelmed with the number of tests, they are also experiencing staffing shortages due to COVID nineteen. So um where tests were typically taking twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Um if you were a regular tester, as I am, pre this surge, um that's not happening anymore. Um so we just ask that people be patient. Um but if you are concerned about your, your status, um if you're experiencing symptoms, then you should get retested. Um you should get a rapid test, you know, if you can. We know there are a lot of testing facilities that are closed and it's difficult to get an appointment, but um we have now, you know, made this testing available seven days a week and have expanded the hours as well. So I'll just pause there if there are any questions. Okay, um.
I do have one thing, I do, I want to thank you, uh Councilwoman Farid, for all your hard work on this. I mean, it was really needed. I know so many people, I mean, lines were everywhere for people getting tested for COVID. I think it was a great service that we have brought into our community because a lot of people were anxious this holiday season and wondering where can they go to get these COVID tests, tests. I know Patient First was packed, all of, you know, the clinics were crowded and everything. So I thought it was a great thing to do, so appreciate you for doing that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I, I echo Mr. uh Councilman Haring, uh you know. Uh just tenacious in getting this service for our community and Dr. Cohen. I mean, she's uh a warrior, uh and as I understand it, on Christmas Day, she was still trying to service the community. So um kudos to, to you guys. Thank you very much for uh being able to put this in place uh for our citizens and for our neighbors, uh neighboring uh municipalities to come and um get the service. Um I've used it a couple of times, so thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things that I do want to talk about, but I, I just think it's too soon to talk about it. Um I would like to, for us to look at how we continue to provide this, this service after the surge is over. Um as we know, we've been through this a couple of years now, waves happen and they will, um you know, temper down. So we need to look at, you know, what does that look like, what type of services we want to provide. Um and, you know, Mayor Cross, um Ms. Barber, what can we do? Should we have some sort of Health and Human Services Department um in the city that this type of service is facilitated through? Um you know, just, I want us to start thinking about that because as long as COVID is, is around, we're going to need testing. And particularly um around, you know, for people who have chosen not to be vaccinated and need to go back to work and they are going to require, you know, regular testing. Um and just also, uh if we're going to talk about going back to meetings in person, um you know, at some point, then maybe having a testing service available, you know, rapid testing prior to entry would, I think, be a, a good idea. But that's just something to think about. We don't have to discuss it right now. Um just continuing on the topic of COVID nineteen, I do have some questions as it relates to our building protocols and what we are doing for events. Um I, in my opinion, our safety protocols are lacking. Um our, our safety protocols are kind of the measures that were in place when our numbers were really, really low. And that's basically just wearing, you know, a mask indoors. Um I am concerned with the number of, of um events happening in the Gold Room and the lack of um protocol, particularly because um, you know, as a government entity, I think we should be leading by example, so that may mean that at times we do more than what is um prescribed. Uh I think also, given where the Gold Room is located, it's actually in our municipal center right on the other side of our um staff. Um and we need to be mindful that we have a small staff. If someone were to get sick, that could be uh easily take out, you know, many of our staff members. Um and so we need to be, I think, a little bit more prudent in our procedures. I'm specifically talking about mechanisms for contact tracing, um temperature checks. Um you know, there are a number of different protocols that can be utilized that I think we're not taking advantage of. And I'm, I'm particularly concerned as we're in this surge that we are still um even hosting events. Um so I'll just, I'll pause there because I know some others are gonna have some comments.
Council, um President, may I continue on with the path that Councilwoman Farid was on?
Yes, Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you. And um before doing so, I do want to echo what was already stated. Um and I want to overly state um the level of gratitude to Councilwoman Farid for leading the charge on um making sure that the constituents, not just mostly Glen Arden, but we, by looking at traffic and the numbers, uh people everywhere are just coming and utilizing um the efforts being brought forth by Dr. Cohen, her husband, and others. And um Councilwoman Farid, just thank you so much for your tenacity in leading, leading the charge on that. I do want to also say that when we talk about the events, that I have a huge concern like Councilwoman Farid just mentioned, as to what um mechanisms are currently being utilized. I'll just put it out there that I attended an event um on the sixteenth of December and I ended up, when I traced it back, I got COVID. Um and at that particular event, um there was no PCR test. You know, there are certain places that I go with the ask, you know, make sure you have, you know, PCR tests done in advance so you can be able to come in, did we need a negative result? And for me, as successful as we want things to be as far as attendance is concerned, we need to look at, oh, we basically doing a super spreader event. And that right now is something that I am very, 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 very concerned about. I don't think um the way we have been doing events is a safe way, and it should not be um how we as government officials um representing the constituents should continue to do them in my private capacity. When I've done my own private events in the Gold Room, I requested PCR results um in addition to temperature, in addition to masks, because this particular variant is no joke. Um those who have made contact with me during the holidays can attest to how sick I really, really was, and I'm someone who is cautious. Just to be clear, I was at an event in the Gold Room and myself and another um person, another elected official on this call were sitting at the same table as um County Executive Angela Alsobrook. And Angela Alsobrook, who was careful within her own right, got COVID, and so I was able to trace it back. So for me, I just want us to be extra cautious. Um I am going to publicly say that I cannot um in my conscience co-sign or sign off on any event um being held by the council or the administration without um certain protocols that are put in place for our citizens and ourselves. So um just wanted to publicly state that. And I may sound upset, guys, I'm not upset, I'm just recuperating, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. We wish you a speedy recovery. Council Farid, is that all on this topic?
Um well, it just continuing around the events and just making sure that we do have some protocols, even that, you know, we may need to cancel some events. I think what we're experiencing now um is greater than what it was in the first wave when, you know, um, is greater than what it was in the first wave when, you know, when things were shut down. So I, I think, I, I, I kind of feel like we're being a bit irresponsible by just continuing on and, and having events as though, you know, this is, this is not happening.
And in any events, are you, are you talking more than, uh, you know, the city sponsored events, you're talking about, uh, Gold Room events as well?
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, a- as, um, uh, Mr. Stewart pointed out, ARPA funds can be used to recruit losses from, you know, the Gold Room. So it, it can't be because we're trying to maintain the income streaming. I, I asked, you know, I'm not, um, minimizing what we have earned, but I would hardly say the fifty-one hundred dollars is, is enough, you know, earnings for us to really be like putting people's lives at risk. Um, so my preference would be that we not host any more events in this Gold Room during this surge specifically until our numbers are at a place where, um, you know, we can consider sort of reopening like we had to do before. Our numbers were never as high as they are now.
Council Fareed.
Council President, sorry, I just wanted to state that I'm not just look, um, in addition to what Councilwoman Fareed mentioned, I'm also looking at not just the Gold Room, but the Nutrition Center. Um, and other places like unless they, I, I'm not anti anything, but I, I'm pro safety. So if there are certain measures that are put in place, then I will, you know, co-sign it, but if not, I can't. And just to be clear, I, I know that Council Woman Fareed mentioned about Prince George's County being at twenty-nine percent. Let's also be clear that our zip code, specifically Glendarden, Llanum, et cetera, we are over seven thousand cases. This is the second, but we are right behind Fort Washington. And there are fit, there are over ninety cities and fifty-eight zip codes. And we are second. Yesterday we were first. Um, and so today we are running neck and neck with Fort Washington. And so it's not a game. Other places are, are saying, are reporting a thousand cases, some as low as three hundred cases. Well, any number is, 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 I don't want to say as low, but three hundred, five hundred, a thousand, but when you look at two zero seven zero six, we are over seven thousand cases. That's a lot. It's averaging one, like almost, um, um, every one out of five individuals, one out of four, one out of five individuals in Glen, in, in this municipality.
Yeah, that's, that's, that is very disheartening. Um, I'm, I'm stunned to hear that. Um, but I, I'm sorry, I'm just, not just specifically talking about events, but when I wanted to talk about protocol, I really think that we need to have some sort of policy in place for how to address this because this will not be the end. This will likely not be the last time we have a wave. Um, and so I'm really looking for us to put some sort of protocol, like if the positivity rate reaches this level, then this is, you know, what we do. Um, we close the building, you know, on, only essential employees need to come in, you know, whatever, whatever that policy might be, but I think we need to have something in place for addressing, you know, how do we manage through a pandemic?
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, uh, Mayor Cross.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you all so much. And, uh, Councilwoman Gill, we wish you a speedy recovery. Um, as well as many others, um, um, for the event, I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that the December sixteenth event was not a city-launched event. Uh, but I do acknowledge the event. Uh, we are, I just wanted to make sure that the citizens are aware that we are increasing the frequency of cleaning uh, in this facility. Uh, as we have had events, the bathroom cleaning seems to be the most tragic place where, um, this particular virus is finding itself, you know, harboring its tenants. Uh, so we have increased our frequency of cleaning throughout these events. And after each event, we do go through and do a cleaning, uh, of the facility itself. Now, uh, the City of Glendarden follows the protocol of the Prince George's County uh, as it pertains to, uh, COVID nineteen. And, uh, with that, we also are, uh, making sure that events do have the necessary distances, that we are airing out the space and that we are ensuring, uh, that we do have temperature scanners. In fact, the administration invested in the temperature scanners that are on the wall. So as soon as you, uh, walk in to the administration, your temperature is checked. Uh, for each, uh, city, um, event, I do knock on wood. Um, we have not had a single case reported, uh, for events that we have launched from the city. Um, that, 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 that we have, uh, been informed of. So I just wanted to acknowledge that because, uh, while I take nothing away from the discussion of increased heightened, uh, protection uh, in this time, agreed, uh, I just want to make sure that it is not misconstrued, that there has been any trouble, uh, relative to the City of Glendarden and the procedures that we have taken. Now, there is a one hundred percent face mask rule in the city, uh, in the administration for those that have their own office spaces. Um, with a doctor's note, uh, they are allowed to come out of masks because we do not want anyone suffocating, uh, particularly if they have, um, a particular breathing disorder where they need to catch an adequate amount of air, have we find them passed out in their offices. Uh, so we do have that for those with office doors. Uh, but relative to our common spaces, everyone is required to have their face masks on. But again, we do follow Prince George's rules on this. Uh, we are paying close attention to not just the county, but the state. And even further, the further restrictions from the CDC are all taken into account. Uh, relative to, um, you know, the COVID testing and the test results, we still acknowledge that there are HIPAA restrictions for forcefully asking someone to provide, though, uh, we can take a look at, uh, the entrance criterias that, uh, many of our guests are, are adhering to uh, with the COVID nineteen, um, negative tests being provided prior to entry. And, um, for private events, that's fantastic. Uh, we do want to protect our city and our, um, make sure that we don't find ourselves on the wrong side of the law of HIPAA in this case, though. But we do acknowledge that, um, uh, there is a need for increased attention to this. Uh, but just note, uh, citizens and council that the administration is taking the necessary precautions uh, to ensure that we are doing those temperature ske- checks. Uh, we are sanitizing and, uh, we have our sanitizer available. We have our gloves ready, uh, at the ready, uh, particularly for any of those events. Uh, thank you for that.
So, Councilwoman Fareed.
Um, yes, in, in terms of events, what are we doing to really look at them? Um, I hear what you're saying, Madam Mayor, but when I think about the fact that on a Wednesday, a whole, the whole entire county public school system was closed. And then on Saturday, we hosted an event for children in that same age group. I'm wondering where, where are we evaluating what events to continue with and which ones not to continue with? And where are we willing to make adjustments to already, you know, laid plans to really manage and accommodate and adjust and be flexible for what is happening in our world? Um, I, I, I don't, I, I, I think, you know, what Councilwoman Gill highlighted as an event was at that Gold Room, so it did not have the protocols that are being highlighted. So I think I'm just concerned that we, we don't, we're kind of, um, we're very subjective on our approach for handling these things. So again, I think we need to have some clear policies about how we will address, um, and how we will manage through the rest of this pandemic.
And again, I just, I want to make sure that we note that that event was a private event on the sixteenth of December.
Has there been any consideration given to, uh, closing the municipal center, uh, altogether? Uh, not necessarily for staff, but I'm having anything in there, uh, as I do share concern with, uh, Councilwoman Fareed and Councilwoman Gill in that I was actually out of town that weekend when Whole Express happened, uh, and unbeknownst to me, my son was there. I didn't know my sister-in-law was going to take him there, but, um, I would not have agreed to that had I known she was going to take him there just because of everything that's going on. Um, and from what I've been reading, the surge that we're in is, is a result of a Thanksgiving gathering. We haven't even seen the surge from the Christmas or the New Year. Uh, and as we move, as we start January off, um, you know, we didn't necessarily catch it before, but we have opportunity to get ahead of what could possibly come now. So has there been consideration to close, uh, the municipal center one? Uh, and another concern that I have is our personnel policy as relates to, uh, telework. Um, I know not everyone can telework. It's hard for public works to telework and, you know, police officers can't telework. Uh, but my concern is for single parents, um, particularly, uh, single women, uh, who, uh, in my case, I have, I have a, uh, an employer who is understanding that I have to leave sometimes at two-thirty to go get in the long line to get my son from school. Uh, and in cases where they just tell me up, we're closed, then I have to make adjustments and I can telework. Um, and currently, uh, I know we have turnover in staff and we have staff within the six-month period of, uh, being an employee, but according to our policy, they cannot telework, um, as, as it stands now, which I don't agree with. I understand that it's a policy that probably should have, that, you know, look, it probably would have been good in a normal circumstance, but with COVID, uh, and, uh, in some cases, COVID, you know, asymptomatic. So, um, the fact that these people have to take sick leave, uh, if they're asymptomatic and cannot work, even though they want to work and they haven't approved a necessary sick leave to be able to to leave and then have to go into the PTO, I think it's unfair. And so, uh, I just wanted to to talk on those two points about consideration of closing municipal center and, uh, readdressing our personnel policy as relates to telework for eligible employees because I think this is a special circumstance where if, uh, uh, an employee has a child who gets sent home for isolation for two weeks, uh, that that person should not have to take, uh, any leave, but should be given the opportunity to telework. So Mayor Cross, on our first point, closing the municipal center in preparation for the wave that is coming from Christmas and, uh, New Years.
Thank you for that question. And, uh, we do acknowledge the concern across the council on this one. Um, with our telework particularly. Now, we did have a telework strategy, uh, when COVID was in its highest back, uh, March twenty, uh, twenty twenty, uh, forward, uh, we ended up pulling that when schools, um, and I would say, uh, prematurely started back in September of this year, in fact. Uh, when there were many companies that had a telework strategy in place. I honestly believe the right answer was to leave the kids be because, um, companies were accustomed to accommodating the needs of, um, you know, parents with small children, uh, and they were also making it work. But when we went back to school in September, therein created an adjustment across the workforce, not just in the City of Glendarden, where, uh, many parents are forced to utilize their leave once again. And, uh, I'm not exonerated from that. Remember mayor's part-time job. I have a full-time job and I have to use my, my leave, my annual leave, if anything were to happen. Um, so with that case, we do have, uh, put in place a temporary, uh, protocol that will allow us to support parents, um, because obviously I am a parent, parents do have my heart. Where if a child has a contact or has, uh, their school, um, been notified that they have a potential contact, then we are allowing that parent to, uh, with the doctor's note to come out and we do give them uh, some form of administrative leave based on the guidelines of the CDC. Now that gives us five days. Anything above and beyond that, then, um, I mean, we are a government. And as much as, uh, like I said, my heart yearns for the parent because I am one. Uh, we are a government and we have to exercise for the whole of society. Uh, and in this case, uh, while we all would love to just be able to telework, that does not equal a functioning government in the City of Glendarden. Uh, nor would that equal a functioning Prince George's County. That's why we follow, um, as a minimum, Prince George's County's rules, uh, relative to the administration. Remember, this is an operational government. Um, and that doesn't take into account how I personally feel, by the way.
Yeah, and, and so I, I think this is my point. I'm not asking for administrative leave. For, for instance, if, if, uh, our, let's just say our, uh, uh, website person, website specialist or something, uh, if that employee's child was sent home because they were in close contact with somebody. So the child isn't necessarily sick, but that child has to go home. Uh, what I'm hearing is that you offer that person administrative leave when that job could be done remotely. Uh, for, if, if that person is going to be isolated for five days, I'm not asking for an extended period of just leave beyond time, uh, but it makes more sense that in the isolation period, um, if that person could continue to do their job without going into their, um, uh, their personal leave if necessary. Uh, because I don't see an issue if everybody's healthy and they're just isolated because they've been in close contact to, to just not work and be about the business of the city at all if they are asking to do so. So that is what I was, I was talking about.
And I understand and, and I'm familiar with the, with, with what you're discussing here. Uh, but we do acknowledge that, um, there are those that themselves have found themselves in a predicament where, uh, you know, the virus has impact, uh, and we do need to overall, and it's not just for, uh, the one. We need to assess it for the whole. Uh, and so we need to keep this operational running. I mean, if we thought the complaints against public works were bad before, if I give everybody telework, then you know I'm getting nothing done. So this, we just got to keep that in mind, you know, that we are still running a city.
So, I'm not talking about public works. That's not common sense to me to, for public works to telework. It's impossible. But all I'm asking for is, is common sense personnel policy as it relates to people who can telework. I mean, it's, it's, it's unfortunate, but like I said, police officers can't telework. So you're not going to be able to have it across the board. Uh, but I do think we need to revisit that and I do think that we need to get ahead of the next surge that is coming. Instead of being reactive, uh, we can start being proactive in doing as much as we can to protect people because no matter what, people are dying from this virus, uh, and, and one life is all, uh, that we need to protect. Uh, not to mention if multiple people die, but I'm trying to save the, even one person that can, uh, not die from this virus or not get sick from this virus or something we're having in our, in our building. I think that's, uh, something that we should be proactive for. Councilwoman Gill?
Thank you, Council, um, President. And I do want to say that I'm in agreement with what you stated, Council President. I, I have a question for, um, and it can either be Council, um, Vice President Ferguson or Councilwoman Jones or Councilman Herring as they were there, um, back in March twenty twenty. I know Mayor Cross just mentioned that period of time. So when COVID had just started and as we know right now, COVID is worst, you know, as far as what we're seeing right now with this Omicron, um, contagion, excuse me, being so contagious. you know, as far as what we're seeing right now with this Omicron, um, contagion, excuse me, being so contagious. How was the building operating exactly as far as telework or not? Like, any one of you can, provide some insight with that? Like, did it work? Did it not work?
Councilman Jones.
Um, I think Councilman Herring was, uh, the, 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 uh, Council President during that time. Uh, uh, we had a, a meeting and at that time it was decided that the, um, building would, uh, close down and only essential staff, which ended up being the Police Department and the Finance Department, um, coming into the building with the city manager was there, um. And that worked pretty well. I think they came, kind of came out of that because of, uh, how long were we going to be able to have people out on administrative leave, you know, during this period? And then, once I became Council President, um, people were coming back to work. And, um, we had two cases that came up while we were there, uh, and those persons went out and were gone. Uh, but I came to the City Hall every day and made sure when I, of course, when I come in, whenever I come in, whether it's COVID or not, I wipe down everything where I am and, uh, clean up, uh, whatever I have to do, to, uh, make it whatever. And, uh, because I had to be Council President and Council Clerk, uh, I had to be, uh, in the City Hall. So there was no way of getting around it, uh, into what needed to be done. But, uh, like I said, there were two cases when, when the, when the folks came back, we did have two cases. And those persons went out and nobody else seemed to, uh, contract contracted. And, um, during that time, and they had already put up the thermometers and the, um, the, the, the prevention to, you know, make sure that anybody that came into the building was that, um, had the thermometer tests and also, um, you know, even had the mask on. Cause we had a couple of vendors had to come in for the, um, Xerox machines and, and for other things. So, um, those were the only issues that we had. I mean, I guess, uh, Councilman Herring could weigh in on this also.
Um, yeah, um, we, we, I mean, it worked pretty well. I mean, we, we did remote. Everybody was hooked up who could do remote, did remote. Of course, public works and police are essential employees, so they could not do it. And that's why they got the hazard pay in their paycheck for being there. Um, but I mean, it works. I mean, I mean, it can work. I don't see why some of them, I mean, some of the employees can work remotely, you know, um. I mean, it can be done as long as you got all your, uh, all the infrastructure in place to do it with no interference, you know. You know, system down, systems going down on anything, as long as the server and everything is working right, you should be fine. If that's what, if that's what the council wanted to do. Um, let me say though, um, because the, the personnel manual is quite clear on telework and it says the telework will be, um, approved on a case-by-case basis. So, and it says that it would be situational, um, for special circumstances, of course, COVID nineteen pandemic situations, operational need and medical issues. So, I mean, it's pretty flexible. So I'm not sure why this conversation is being held. No administrative, no administrative leave can, really needs to be used if telework is allowed for, you know, the employee is not just set up to do it. It seemed like they should be able to do it, especially if there's a situation with COVID, you know, in a way of, you know, taking care of children. I mean, just like my cousin, she had a call the other day, her, her daughter's class test are positive. She's a school teacher. She had to be home, you know, so. You, I mean, you gotta make arrangements. You gotta make adjustments for that. You gotta have some compassion, because everybody's not gonna be able to find a babysitter at the last minute. And I'm not babysitting your kid if they got COVID, you know, so.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
Section, um, section twenty-one of the Personnel Manual. So, the city manager want to look that up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones and, um, Councilman Herring. And I, I just, um, it was important for me to hear that guidance or, or experience because you, you three were there at that period when it was, when it took place the first time. And I just want to, um, echo, this is not going down a path of faith or anyone's faith journey, but we start off with prayer. And to me, it's, I'm just finding it so confusing that we can't exercise grace during, um, a pandemic. This is not a, I think this person's going to try to get over or that person's going to try to get over. This is reality. And if the work can get done while they are remote, and they're not essential, meaning they don't need to be in the office, then I think we, as people who start off with prayer, who, you know, are embodying what we're supposed to be as servant leaders, we need to actually look at what we should be doing for our, um, colleagues slash employees. That's just where I'm at with that. And apparently from hearing from two out of the three, individuals who were there back in twenty twenty, it did work. So, um, I'm hoping that we can, have it happen again. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, I'll come to you next. I'm gonna go to Councilman Hairston first, because I saw his head up.
I'm okay. Nevermind.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Jones.
Would it be fair to ask, uh, since Mrs. Barber is, has experience as a city manager and may have, uh, have to deal with issues like this, could she give us her perspective on, on what she thinks? Or is it too premature to ask you to do that, Mrs. Barber, without having read the, uh, Personnel Manual?
Well, I did read the Personnel Manual and, um, uh, one thing that I think is left out, is that the Personnel Manual does also say that during a period of telework, that an individual must have childcare as, um, as if they were working. And I may be mistaken, but I believe that is correct. And I do understand the, the need for, um, some compassion during this period. I have a child myself. I have two children. And so I, so I to, I totally understand. Um, I think what you have to do is you do have to have in place, um, some necessary checks and balances, so that if the work needs to be done and the work can get done by telework, that, um, it's, um, it's manageable. Now, obviously there are occasions where people would need to come into the office. I don't know how it was done when, um, you all were under lockdown for COVID. But in my experience, um, you know, we still had to, have people come into the office periodically because you have mail that's delivered, you have vendors that are coming in, and situations like that. So one hundred percent telework is not necessarily possible. But I think there is some room for, um, some telework to occur. But again, I think it needs to be, um, equitable. Um, and I, I understand that not every position can telework, but it's, um, I think on a case-by-case basis is reasonable. If that answers your question.
So, would you, are you saying that we might need to add an addendum to the Personnel Manual concerning this issue? With stipulations as to how it's going to be, uh, carried out?
No, I think that the Personnel Manual is, is, um, acceptable. I think that there needs to be an agreement in place, um, between the employer and the employee, um, so that everyone is on the same accord. And that if there is, um, some monicum of childcare, that is, um, occurring during telework, that there is a agreement as to how those hours are accounted for, when you are caring for your child and when you are teleworking, because obviously it's hard to do the, to do both simultaneously.
Thank you.
So, and to answer Councilman Herring, uh, question, I, I bring this up because I face hurdles, in, uh, in trying to get our council clerk, uh, approved for, uh, telework, uh, within that restricted times, uh, uh, time limit, uh, and because of the, uh, childcare issue. Uh, and so I just wanted to, to say that even with that, in the last two years, we've all had to adjust. And I've had to stay home with my child and get the job done. Um, I, I, it, it's very difficult to try to time check everyone. Um, oh, I didn't see you five minutes. I didn't see you for three minutes. When the thing is, are you getting the job done? Um, if, if I have to, you know, micromanage you to that level, then there's no need for you to be a part of, uh, our staff. Um, I hired you because I trust that you can do the job. Um, and I think that that level of micromanaging and trying to put something in place to micromanage to that level is just, um, it's crazy, uh, to me. Um, so. Councilman Shari.
Yeah, I was, um, thank you. I was gonna, you know, echo those same sentiments around, you know, balancing, getting work done. Um, and then, you know, the needs of childcare. I, I do think that there needs to be something specific for, um, COVID-related telework, because that's very different than I need to telework today because I'm having my furniture delivered. When you have to telework because of COVID, as Councilman Herring said, you are unlikely to be able to have someone come and watch your child while you work. Um, and you know, you could be asymptomatic. Your child could, you know, have very mild symptoms, but you all need to be away from other people. And the, I think the focus needs to be on the ability to get the work done, because if people don't have a work ethic, this is my philosophy. If people don't have a work ethic, it doesn't matter if they're home or in the office. They're gonna be in the office surfing the internet all day, if they don't have a sense of I have work to do and it needs to get done. So I don't know that them being at work necessarily means that they're getting work done versus, you know, being at home. And I, and I'm saying this as someone who I've been working remotely for almost five years now. Um, so pre-pandemic, and I get plenty of work done. You just have to be flexible and I think we need to be flexible as well. And again, focus on, you know, getting the work done. But again, I think we need something specific for COVID, because it's gonna be a different telework experience for people who are, you know, dealing with that.
Thank you, Councilman Shari. All right. Uh, Mayor Cross, I see your hand. If you want to briefly say something before we move on to the next topic.
Yes, thank you, uh, Council President. I, I just wanted to echo what, um, City Manager Barber highlighted there in the manual. Um, again, we do want to take care of our employees. And we do do that on a case-by-case basis and we have been doing it on a case-by-case basis. What we don't want to do, um, is get into an unfair circumstance, where childcare is something that gives permit to some, where others, um, either unfortunate enough not to have children, our children that are grown, are not afforded that same, um, criteria. I.e. if they go to an event and they have exposure, what we are requiring is five days, uh, and then a negative test, and then they have to come back to work. So, um, I just want us to, as council, please, as the administration works through this, give us the room to work through it. Uh, because we do need to make sure that this is a equity across all of our employees and we don't want to create an unfair advantage. I do acknowledge the twenty twenty, twenty nineteen year group when COVID took a hit and it's told, I too was teleworking. But the world was teleworking and that made it different. Uh, in this case, the world is no longer teleworking. There are subsets of the world still teleworking, but for the most part, the world is working. Uh, and that's why we do adhere to, uh, the county's requirements when it comes down to, uh, COVID nineteen. We have put into place a COVID nineteen, um, policy, which, uh, we've just staffed through HR, um, myself and City Manager Barber have looked at it. And what we are requiring, uh, relative to, uh, doctor's notes and being able to return back into, the facilities for the protection of others. But, uh, again, telework should not be an excuse for childcare. Uh, and that is in the handbook of every office facility. Um, we have now been told that we were not going back to school since the, um, twenty-first of December. So we've had at least two weeks of that time to find care. Um, and, and, and I, I acknowledge the case that we're talking about, uh, and this wasn't a COVID, uh, exposure. This was a, this was not a symptom, I would say, rather, um, just a, the school is gonna close it down. And this is kind of what happened back in March of twenty nineteen, where two schools had some, uh, contact with someone third person, and all of a sudden the whole school was shut down. Uh, and I do acknowledge that, um, this may have been, um, uh, you know, one of those events, but we are taking care to afford, uh, as much as we can leverage. But again, the, uh, this is a government. We are running an administration. And we will be equitable across for all of our employees and taking care of them appropriately.
So I understand that. This, with all due respect, ridiculous. If I have a, a mother who, if I'm hearing you correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Cross. If I have a mother or father whose son or daughter is out, uh, and they cannot find childcare, you're telling me that they have to take leave instead of telework? You're telling me that they have to now come out their pockets extra to pay something? Remember, we don't have the best salaries to pay extra out of their dollars to go find something that's expensive, uh, to find childcare for the individual, instead of if that person is perfectly capable, of teleworking, just to telework at home. And this is the issue that I have of being reactive instead of proactive. Because I disagree that the whole world is back to work. You have a lot of the workforce that has left, because of, uh, uh, because they're just not gonna tolerate. Some people don't feel safe. Uh, there, I mean, you have, shoot, McDonald's can't even open up their, uh, their restaurant. They have to go through drive-through, because people are saying, hey, I'm done with the workforce. So now we have a workforce that the, 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 the balance and power shifting, not all the way, but some ways, to where the employee has more power now. And they, we're going to end up, being reactive in that, one, we're waiting on the county to do something before we follow their lead. Well, we're, we are perfectly bright and responsible here, where we could think for ourselves. We don't necessarily have to found, like, follow the county, in every single thing. We can actually think forward. And a county can look at Glen Arden and say, hey, they have a really robust policy on, uh, teleworking during this, um, uh, COVID phase. And then we'll be leading the effort instead of following, uh, the other people. Uh, and if we're not careful, then we'll end up losing good people, because of a small issue of them being able to telework from home, but not being able to, because of our rules. And then they'll leave, and then we'll be looking on outside, looking in, trying to hire someone who's gonna access this, the same thing. Hey, what is your telework policy? Cause I'm, I'm experiencing that now. I, I have a hard time filling positions, at my company because of teleworking policies. You know, some people want a hundred remote teleworking. I'm not saying that I'm on board with that. But I'm, I just think that we just need to have common sense policy as it relates to our employees. If we're to take care of anyone, uh, we need to take care of first our citizens and second, the people who service our citizens, which are our employees. Uh, and I just think that it just doesn't make sense to tell that mother or father because your son got sent home. Now I'm going to penalize you and force you to either take your paid leave off and not do any work, even though you're capable of working. And I want you to pay at least three to five hundred dollars to, to go, if you do, do get telework, to go find childcare for the individual, for your child. I just think that's crazy.
And so I, let me just add to that. They will likely not be able to find anyone to come take care of their child, because if their child was sent home, they were potentially exposed. So why would someone come and watch someone who was potentially exposed? Symptoms are not, right? Because symptoms can, can take a while to present themselves.
I think we just need to be better. We need to, and I'm not saying you and Mayor Cross, if you have to come up with a solution right now. I just think that we just, we are all bright people, uh, that have been elected. Uh, we have, you know, uh, uh, Ms. Barber on now. I just think that we need to make common sense, uh, policy for, uh, our employees as it relates to, to working, and, um, how we manage getting through this pandemic as it relates to, uh, who's coming into the building versus who not, who's not coming into the building. That, that's all. I'm not, I'm like, Uh, who's coming into the building versus who not, who's not coming into the building. That that's all. I'm not, I'm not, not looking for a solution right now. But I think we need to be better. That's it. Uh, Ms. Barber, I saw that you unmuted yourself. Do you have something to say?
Yeah, I mean, I think that um as Mayor Cross has indicated, we are looking into the telework policy and. Um, it's, we don't have an answer for you right now, but we are working with human resources. And um tightening up, you know, the telework policy and making it something that will work for all.
Okay.
And that's, that's true. And Council President, you did give me leverage to comment if needed to. One thing's for sure, uh, I don't want anyone to take away from this meeting that we have a hard heart in this city. We do not have a hard heart in the city, but we do need to make sure that we do put in place. The policies that do not in fact break the city administratively. Um, if we are looking at a case by case, which is what we started this conversation off with, then we will definitely look at that. But we're looking at that case by case on actual exposure and someone having it as well. And and not just a suspect of, uh, and that that's where we want to be careful with. Because uh we cannot start to then use the taxpayers' dollars to um essentially what we're doing is paying for childcare at that point. Using the taxpayers' dollars. So we just want to be careful uh in how we execute this policy overall. And take care of not just um, you know, we we're gonna take care of all of our, all of our uh teammates. Um, in the city administration and we are working a plan with HR. Uh, again, right now, we already have a policy in place if there has been the exposure to take care of them.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I just think that it disconnect. I was perfectly fine with uh Ms. Barber's comments. Uh, I just think that maybe I'm I'm hearing something wrong, but there's a contradiction when you, when you speak. You'll say something, then you say but, and then it just contradicts everything that you said before. Uh, so maybe that's just my misunderstanding. Uh, if if we're going where Ms. Barber said, I I feel comfortable with what she said. Uh, I just think that when you speak, and like I said, it could be me misunderstanding, that you say one thing, but then you contradict it as if though. You're not understanding what I'm saying. But I I trust that uh you and Ms. Barber will get together and and work it out.
Mr. President, can I just say one thing before we leave this topic? Just, I I mean, which is kind of really bothering me is I think everybody's an adult. And everybody have expectations of what they supposed to do as an adult on your job. Now, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing in the teleworking, then then they lose that privilege. It's just that simple. You know, I mean, on my job, I telework. I'm supposed to, you know, I got certain hours I'm supposed to work, you know. They don't, they don't chase me down. They don't do anything. They expect me to have this done by this date. They expect this project to be done. And whether I'm doing it, you know, the first part of the day or the last part of the day, but as long as they get it by the date they need it. They're fine, you know, and I'm just saying that it's sometimes, at some point, it's it's personal responsibility. You'd be, you're given a privilege to do it. Then you make sure you do the job that you gotta do. If you're not doing the job, then you pay the penalty and you you back in the building. So I'm not understanding what the big conversation is. I mean, and it and it gotta be, the personnel manual you're looking at, it is, it's, I mean, it lays out some guidelines. And I just think that no situation is all is written in stone, you know, there's always a a a, you gotta have some wiggle room somewhere. You know, you can't just sit there and say, okay, well, you know, the city's not gonna run because we letting these people off. Well, I I my whole, my whole building was shut down and we ran for a year and a half with almost two hundred people. So you got, you talking about thirty people. I mean, well, Brittany administrator said you're talking about like six. I mean, it can run. It it, we did it for a year, you know, everything ran. So it isn't like it's gonna, yes, and I understand, yes, some people do gotta come in. We did have people come in on my job that needed to come in for like for payroll and uh AP. But, you know, it was like once a week, you know, so I mean, it's just, take the situation for it as well, have a little bit of compassion. Me personally, I don't care if your own baby is sending your kid or not, as long as the work getting done, I don't care what you're doing, you know. You could be at McDonald's on on using their wifi, got a kids running around in little jumbo thing, as long as the work is getting done, I don't care. I'm not, I'm not to the point where I'm gonna micromanage an adult to that level, you know, and then if the work isn't getting done, then we have an issue. But I mean, it it they're making this out to be a a big thing and it and it isn't. It's just having a little bit of compassion, so that's all I wanted to say.
So I see two people hands up. Uh, Councilman Hairston, I'll go you first.
I just wanted to know if it was cool if we move on. I mean, everybody gonna keep having their opinions all night. Somebody gonna keep saying, everybody, it's a really sensitive topic. I think everybody should just go to the drawing board and just figure out what's the best way to move forward, figure out some ideas, strategies, some things, and then come back. We've been here quite a long time right now.
Thank you, Councilman Hairston. Councilman, uh, Councilman Gill.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment slash question, or maybe it's a question, I'm not sure. But I know I've gone to the municipal center and other things in my professional, in my, you know, capacity as a leg- as a legislator. And so I've seen, you know, some people who are on this call with their children, you know, in the municipal center and they're doing their jobs. So are we saying that from the mayor, you know, on down to everybody else, including everybody on this call when we're doing work? Our children should not be in the building as well, because if that's the case, I'm thinking that whether I see your kids there or not, if you're doing work, you're doing work. So if they're teleworking, they're just doing work at home with their kids there and it's COVID. So I just wanna make sure that let's be very careful with what we're saying. If we're saying that if we're working and we can't have our kids around. Then that should be COVID or not COVID.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. Any other comments? Ms. Jones, can you mute? Thanks. Uh, traffic safety.
Council President, can we save the the rest of this for at least my next two topics? Traffic safety and um and retrofitting sidewalks for the regular meeting. It's just, it's, it's almost ten o'clock. And it it that's too, that's too dense of a subject matter to get through tonight.
Okay. Uh, elevator. Ms. Jones.
I will quickly say this about that. Once again, uh, the monies that was received from the state or the state. Give to the city were uh considered abandoned. I res- I have to have an email that was sent to the prior uh city manager. Ken Jones, asking him what the city was gonna do and they told him if they hadn't gotten an answer in thirty days, that they would consider the project abandoned. Which I don't think he ever answered them. So uh as Mr. Stewart has pointed out, he doesn't, hasn't been able to find any monies for this elevator. Uh, I can take all of the documents that I have and uh. Mrs. Barber, please don't cut my head off and give them to the uh now city manager. When she gets an opportunity. She can look over and see in case that I missed anything and reviewing the documents concerning the elevator. Uh, it to uh take another look. I also talked to the um engineer of the the drawings. She says that the drawings were good, but they would have to be updated, because the drawings were done in uh last, uh, look at the drawings was two thousand eighteen. And she's saying that the county has changed their uh criteria since then, so those drawings would have to be updated. So I will, like I said, take those documents and uh give them to the new city manager when and let her put those uh. On her list to go over again and see if there was anything that I missed, but that money has been, uh, as far as the state is concerned, it has been abandoned. And they didn't um, any more monies that was, any more monies that was uh afforded to the city were not given to the city. Because they didn't follow up on uh what they were supposed to do in their portion of the uh grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Hairston, I saw a hand. Did you mean to put that up or no?
I do. That's a good bag. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, uh, so with us for the other two on uh table, another two for next meeting. I do wanna say that there's a lot of work to do in January. Uh, so I, you know, for the council members, just get geared up to either. Having extra meetings uh where we stick within a timeframe uh or longer meetings. Either way, uh, we will have to have them to get a lot of this stuff, uh, a lot of things we need to get done, done. Uh, especially when it comes to opera. Uh, and I do view the work session as our session. Uh, we may not stay here for two hours, cause this is a lot of work to get done. The the public could stay on if they want to or log off. But it's opportunity for us to work together uh to get things done. Uh, so we may go over the allotted two hour time. I'll be more mindful of the public meetings. Uh. But there, like I said, there's a lot of work needs to get done. Uh, so I will send out some more emails, uh, cause we have positions to fill. Uh, and other things to do. So just brace yourselves. Don't want you to think that it's coming out of left field. It's just. Get prepared to to wrap up the meeting. So. Uh, all right, uh, if there's nothing else, uh, Mr. Hairston, are you good to go?
Yeah, I'm good to go. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Gill.
Yes, sir.
Councilor.
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you so much. I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Herring.
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks.
Councilman Ferguson.
I am good. Thank you.
All right, well, with that, the time is ten oh three. Thank you for joining. We'll see you uh next week. Have a good night.